All right, welcome everyone. I call the April 20th, 2021 Bothell Regular City Council Meeting to Order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's Office via links in the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, their connection will be terminated. At this point, we'll take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the City Clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr. Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you. All right, lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of our meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when you're not speaking. To reduce the chance of two people speaking at the same time, please hold up the little yellow speaker card in the lower portion of your screen. And let's move on to the first item on the agenda, our meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes tonight to the agenda?
I'd like to request that we add, we already have an executive session to discuss property concern, property, property issue. My request is that we add a second executive session for potential litigation.
All right, we can do that. Councilmember Thompson?
I was going to move that if you needed me to, but if, okay. I moved to add an executive session as a new item 6B to the agenda for tonight's meeting to discuss with legal counsel potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4230110II.
One I.
All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion to add an executive session as a new item 6B to the agenda for tonight's meeting to discuss the, with legal counsel potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, parent one, parent I. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none. City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough. You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Dorr absent.
And thank you very much. And for the record, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dorr is absent and excused, correct? She indicated in advance that she would not be able to attend. Is that correct?
Correct. All right. All right, on to our next item, public engagement opportunities. All right, so Earth Week, April 19th through the 25th, join UDA Bothell, Cascadia College and the City of Bothell for virtual events. Details at bothellwa.gov. Earth Day, then we have Metro East Link Connections Transit Survey, through April 25th, weighing on the future of transit on the east side. Details at the link below. And then Natural Yard Care Online Workshops, Managing Pests and Weeds Along Waterways, April 21st, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Attracting Pollinators to Your Garden, April 28th, 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. So register at bothellwa.gov backslash NYC workshops. All right. Next, we have a couple of recognitions. All right. Do we have Dr. Reed with us?
We do, Mayor. Just one moment, I'll panel her in.
Great, thank you.
She should be showing up in a moment here. There she is.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate you on the Superintendent of the Year. Also, thank you for doing, being so forward thinking and being proactive and taking the steps to keep our school district safe during the start of this whole pandemic and just making the decisions and leadership throughout this whole process. So we're very thankful to have you in our North Shore School District, leading and providing that leadership. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. It's definitely been a community effort. Appreciate the partnership with the City of Bothell and all the supports that you all have provided and shared. So it takes a team.
See, I don't know if any other city council members. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Reed, I just wanted to say thank you for being bold in the beginning of this. Thank you for going out on a limb. Thank you for doing what you thought was right. I appreciated that very much. I appreciated how decisive you were and how you handled it. And thank you for including us in your victory tour congratulating you on this award.
Thanks, Councilman Thompson.
See, Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I'm just going to add a brief thank you, Dr. Reed. As a substitute in the school district, I kind of, you know, stood more in the background, took personal pride in watching you take leadership and just appreciated the way all of staff in the school district turned to and worked as a team. If you dropped many stitches, we didn't see it or notice it. So congratulations to everybody. You did a really, really good job.
Yeah, thanks. It definitely was a team effort from our board to every staff member in the district and our community partners in the cities. I remember having lunch with city folks from Kenmore, Woodville and Bothell the day before I knew I was going to have to make the decision and just wanted to really say how impressed I continue to be with these partnerships. It makes all the difference.
Oh, I remember we were, the mayor and I were at a meeting with Cascadia and UDA Bothell and our then city manager and assistant city manager came in. And I have never seen such error on either of their faces as fresh from that conversation of, of looking of how quickly COVID could spread in our area. And it could have been a lot worse.
No question.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to recognize the efforts you've taken, Dr. Reed, to listen to our young people. From what I have heard, serving on the Norshire Scholarship, Norshire Foundation Youth Advisory Council, students and our young people are having a very hard time being in COVID during COVID. That they don't get to get out and socialize and become a part of their school community. And I know that you're listening to these young people all the time and trying to see what we can do as a school district to help their isolation. I really have heard from two young families, two families about two young girls who one is was attempting suicide and the other one just said, I've got to get out of this house. So I know you understand how, what these young people are going through. And I want you to know, I really appreciate all of your efforts that you are doing on their behalf.
Thanks, Councilwoman McCullough. Appreciate that.
All right, Councilmember Agnew.
I too would like to thank you, Dr. Reed, for everything you've done. You're so humble. You say that it's all been a team effort, but if I'm not mistaken, a team needs a driver. So thank you for being that driver that pulled everybody along.
Well, thanks, Councilman Agnew. I know that, you know, we have kids back in buildings now, many of whom are ecstatic and some of whom are anxious and about being there. And then kids learning at home. So it's, like I said, it is a team effort and it's not over. We still have a few, I think, tough months to go here and I, we have to stay disciplined till we're all the way through this.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations, Dr. Reed, on the recognition. I just echo all the comments. But you know, I have a couple of students in the North Shore School District and I speak to many families and there's several struggles that families are going through. So I appreciate the hard work and dedication from the school district. And I look forward to continuing our work together and partnering with the school district and finding opportunities where we can actually partner and create additional active space for our youth and creative ways to get them into more activities. So congratulations again, and I look forward to continuing our work together.
Thanks, Councilman McNeil. And I, I know that I would hear that from you. So it was great to hear that. And it was good to be outside playing bocce soccer today with some kids at Kenmore Middle School.
Great day for it. Wonderful spring weather. All right, so final congratulations and thank you. Thank you for making the time to, you know, be with us virtually. You know, someday we'll all be able to get back together and do these in person. But until then, you know, thank you for coming and sharing your faith with us.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And thanks for having me. I'm grateful to be in a community that supports our schools so strongly. So thank you so much.
All right. So on to continue the theme of recognition. And we have our outgoing, outgoing board and commission members. So we're looking at both of our 2020 and 2021, since we have been meeting virtually for so long. We never got a chance to, we were hopeful that we could do it in person, but here we are. And so we will have to make this our recognition for our boards and commissions. All right, so first up in, for 2020 was Mike Doan with the Arts Commission. Bill Moritz with the Landmark Preservation Board. Andrea Packer with the Library Board. Janet Branham with the Parks and Recreation Board. Jack Linderoth with the Parks and Recreation Board. Patrick Cave with the Planning Commission. Chip Peterson with the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission. And then our most recent from 2021, we have Ann Lewis, Arts Commission, Roy Wilkinson with the Arts Commission, Robert Posey, Civil Service Commission, Sean Gurkey with the Landmark Preservation Board, Laura Escudé with the Library Board, Matt Yeti with the Parks and Recreation Board, Brad P. Strip with the Planning Commission, and David Vleet with the Planning Commission. So we have a couple other members that they, they won't be leaving service, but they're just changing the hats that they'll be wearing. So we just want to recognize Sarah Gustafson for her service on the shoreline boards. So Ms. Gustafson will now be a member of the Planning Commission and Carrie Westerbeck for his work on the Landmark Preservation Board. Mr. Westerbeck is, will also be on the planning commission. So thank you all for your service. You'll be receiving your official recognition in the mail soon. And thank you to Carrie and Sarah for continuing on in your different roles. So I invite our other council members here to say a few words. I know some of us or all of us act as liaisons to many of the boards and have relationships and worked with many of these people over the years. So Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mike and Roy. They were part of the Arts Commission. They were kind of there from the beginning of it. They've helped foster it with their guidance and supervision. It's got to where it is today. And I just want to thank them very much for everything they've done.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
You've, you've mentioned a lot of names of people who I've had the good fortune to cross paths with. But two leapt out with me because I served with them on Planning Commission who are just outstanding human beings. And so I just want to add extra thanks to both Patrick Cave and David Vleet. What they brought to Planning Commission, their perspective. I don't know the City of Bothell can appreciate the volume of insight and care that they gave prepping code for council to digest, but both very phenomenal board members and I really, our commissioner members, and I really appreciate their service they've given to the city.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I've served with some of you on the Parks Board and some of you in ancillary ways as well. Like it's, I mean, you know, you show up to boring meetings and it's not super glamorous, but you do it because you want to make the world a better place and I really appreciate that. So thank you. We appreciate you very much. And I hope to see some of you applying for boards and commissions again. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. And I want to recognize just a few people who I see right here because I see your faces and the years of service. Roy, you've been with us how many years?
Few years. I mean, yeah, since I moved to Bothell. I know you for many instances. I always like to help the city and always appreciate all of your hard work, service. Thank you.
And thank you for your services as well. And Carrie, I know we're looking forward to many years of service in the future. Thank you for your time and effort. You know, for all of the people that were on the commission and boards, this is what makes a good team. And this is why Bothell is special. Thank you all.
All right. Uh, there you go. Yes, with, if you have a virtual background, I don't know if you twisted or sometimes it just doesn't get picked up. And Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it is a little hard to see the, the yellow card on the virtual background, but I just wanted to echo a lot of the comments that were made earlier about thanking you for your service to our community. You know, as we stand together, together, we make our community what our community is. And with your help and leadership in the, in the different community or committees that you served on, you've made Bothell better for a day and a lifetime. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything that you guys have done throughout the years on behalf of our community. So thank you.
Yep, you, you are what make this whole grand experiment continue to work. You do so much of the, the hard work, really dive into the details so much more. You know, the Planning Commission especially, you know, with the the multiple meetings a month with that, really diving into, you know, some challenging and very technical. So all the other boards, I don't want to, you know, denigrate or, you know, diminish them anyways or at all. But they all have their purpose and they all do something for our community and, and create community. So I just very appreciative. I did, you know, my years on the Landmark Preservation Board and, you know, it's great to get involved, meet the people and do the outstanding work for the, the community. So thank you all for your service. And, you know, as Councilmember Thompson said, you know, we hope to see you back in some other form or fashion on some, who knows where, but just keep being involved. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our special presentations. We have our Recology Annual Update with Eric Gagnon, Aaron Gagnon, our Government Affairs and Community Relations Manager.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Emily Warnock, Sustainability and Engagement Coordinator. And I'd like to introduce Erin Gagnon, Government Affairs and Community Relations Manager to provide Recology's annual update.
Thank you so much, Emily. Can everyone see my screen? No? Okay, hold on just one minute. All right, is that better? Perfect. Good evening, Bothell Mayor and City Council Members. Thank you so much for allowing me to present this evening and thank you for allowing us to service your beautiful city. My name is Erin Gagnon. I'm the Government Affairs and Community Relations Manager for Recology King County. So a quick overview for who we are. We are 100% employee owned company. We are resource recovery focused, which means that we invest in infrastructure surrounding recycling as opposed to landfills. And we're focused on upward mobility for union workers. For Bothell specifically, we provide collection services for 11,482 households and 588 commercial and multifamily facilities. We also own and operate a recycling processing facility, also known as a MRF in South Seattle, and we offer public outreach and education. So in the beginning of 2020, like the entire world, we were completely swept aside by COVID-19. Over the course of five days, we transitioned all of our customer service team and our office staff to remote working, which of course involved procuring the hot commodity of laptops for them. Our drivers were considered essential workers and so we needed to quickly ensure that they were operating safely in the field. So we upgraded our clock in methods to be contactless. We also ensured that any messaging that we needed to give to our drivers was done via a platform as opposed to face to face. And we required masks for all of our drivers. We also created the placards that you can see here, the six feet away placards, just to remind residents to please stay social distance. We noticed after the first few months of quarantine that a lot of residents, you know, wanted to come out and talk to somebody. And a lot of times that was the driver. So just a reminder to please socially distance when talking to our drivers, which people were wonderful about. As you can see right at the top of this slide, the very, very brightest spot for us was really the sense of community that our drivers felt. And we received so many notes taped on the top of recycling cans. We received even from a, a family in Bothell. They decorated their entire driveway with a mural that said, thank you to the essential workers. So it was really neat to see the community really rally around us as essential workers. Working from home and, and learning from home really caused an increase in the tonnage that we saw collected from the residential homes. As you can see here, starting in April, we actually started to see up to a 30% increase in monthly collection. So in order to address these emerging needs, we actually reallocated resources wherever possible in order to support that shift in volume. In addition, with people staying at home more, we also saw our call center double, almost double in emails and calls coming in. This was due to increased cardboard pickups, special item recycling pickups and Christmas tree pickups. You can really see in December and January, when people were online shopping and collecting a lot of cardboard, that they were calling in to schedule those additional pickups. And then in January, calling in to schedule their Christmas tree removals. So this is our operational misses. You can see by the green line there, the industry standard is one miss per approximate thousand collections. As you can see, we are extremely focused on collecting when we say we will. So we had very few misses over 2020. So this is going to reflect your city's diversion rate. So this includes multifamily, commercial and residential tonnage. So over 2020, we collected 14,679 tons of trash, 8,182 tons of recycling and 8,108 tons of yard waste and compost. That equates out to a total diversion rate of 52.37%. For residents specifically, they had a diversion rate of 65.43. Due to COVID restrictions, we've moved to a virtual format as all of us have for all outreach and education. Customers can reach out to us and actually schedule virtual presentations, virtual workshops and any technical assistance they need. Luckily, before the shutdown, we were able to do one in-person tour for Cascadia College of our recycling facility. And then we moved into three virtual format presentations of Where Does It Go workshops, which were all well attended. So I'm going to actually shift a little bit into exciting events that have happened in 2021. March 1st, we completed the annexation, which was 1,819 residential customers and six multifamily customers. I am so proud and happy to say it was one of the smoothest transitions that we've seen. And it was really due to a great partnership with Waste Management. So very odd to say, you know, thank you to your competitor, but huge thank you to Waste Management for making that transition smooth. We saw very little increase to our call center due to the annexation, which is always a great thing. Moving on to the AFTS breach, as many of you know, in early February, we were alerted to a situation with our payment processor, AFTS. Unfortunately, in the early days, there was a lack of accurate and factual information provided to us in a timely manner. However, we are very excited to say that we were just notified that none of our recology customers were impacted. Initially, we were expecting to get a full forensic FBI report, but because none of our customers were impacted, we're anticipating just a broad statement from AFTS to be released. And once that is released, we will put that on our website as well as notify each of our customers. And I think it goes without saying that we are planning on changing or we are in the process of changing payment processors. And we are currently implementing that new payment processor, which we expect to be up and running soon. While we are waiting for the implementation, we are not implementing credit holds. We are not issuing any late fees and we are ensuring that there's no disruption to service. And we're also offering temporary ways for our customers to pay on our website. And finally, for up and coming events, we are offering a virtual material recovery facility tour. If you have not toured a recycling facility, I would highly encourage everyone to attend. It is quite fascinating. It might be the recycling nerd in me talking, but truly, it's really interesting to see how our recycling is processed. That's going to be Monday, April 26th from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. There's a QR code there, which if you're equipped with your phone, you can scan. If not, you feel free to log on to our Facebook page and sign up there. I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Just a quick question. I was asked by constituents a few days ago about the recology store. Is it open? When is it going to open if it's not open?
Yeah, so it is not open yet. We are hoping to open soon. We've had the applications open for about a month for associates. Unfortunately, we're finding that not a lot of people are extremely eager to work in a face-to-face customer environment right now. So as soon as we have those positions staffed, we are ready to open safely. So please, if anyone So please, if anyone listening knows of anyone that would like to work for an employee-owned company, please send them our way, because we would love to get the store up and running.
So you're looking for new hires?
We are, correct. We're bringing back several of our employees, but several have also found other jobs. So we're looking to fill those positions so we can open.
Do you have a recommendation for people who are needing to recycle things that aren't typically picked up in their recycling? What would you suggest that they're doing while they wait?
Yeah, absolutely. So we offer pickup for the majority of items that we accepted at our retail store curbside. All people need to do is call our customer service center and just notify them so that our customer service center can notify the driver, so he knows what to look for and what to grab. But yes, we offer curbside pickup.
Awesome to know. I'll pass that on.
Yes, yes, please do. And anyone that's calling into our customer service center, we are letting them know of that option, because we want to make sure that our people are taken care of.
Right. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I am in the annexation area. And as a customer, it was incredibly smooth and incredibly easy. So thank you. I didn't have to call in. And is there a way, and this might piggyback off of what Deputy Mayor Zornz just said, to get rid of Styrofoam? I have a bunch that I'm like holding on to, and I don't know what to do with it.
Yes, well, you have two options. You can either have it picked up curbside, if you want to call and schedule an appointment, or if you have a very, very large amount, our partner is StyroRecycle down in Kent. So if you don't mind taking a trip down to Kent, they will take it. I believe they're open Monday through Friday.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Informative, as always.
Thank you for your partnership.
All right, on to our next item. We have an update on... Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Oh, go ahead, do the update. I just wanted to ask you about a moment of silence. And maybe that would be best to have at the end of our end of our council session tonight. So before we move on to either visitor or go to the presentation, I'm sorry, I thought we were done. And then I'll just, and then we can follow up.
Okay. So yeah, so we'll be on to an update on Block D Development Proposal. I believe we will have Community Development Director Mike Cotterman. There we are.
Good evening, Mayor. Evening, Councilmembers. I am looking for... There's Jeff. He was wearing a jacket. I didn't recognize him. Thank you for the time this evening. We wanted to come in and just give you an update on where things are in the process for Block D and the development proposal on that particular block. We know it's of particular interest to the City Council as well as to much of the public. So this is just an update on where we are in the process. And Jeff Smith is our Development Services Manager. And he is going to give you the status report on where we are in that review. So Jeff?
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor Olson, members of the council. Let me share my screen here, I think. I get this right. That's it. So I will walk through this briefly. Just to remind everyone, the development proposal for Block D, which is the large empty lot just south of the Boulevard Place Senior Housing Project in downtown Bothell, is currently in review. The application for that was received in December of this year. Importantly, the project is a Type 2 application. Development applications for downtown are administrative review, and it's right in the middle of that review right now. So this will, this will give you kind of an in-the-moment update as to where we are with the whole thing. Council doesn't ultimately have a direct role in the decision-making on this. Much of your work was done when the downtown plan was adopted and all the codes and policies were adopted. So we're following along what, the road that you laid down when you adopted those codes and those policies. You may or may not know a little bit about this project. The applicant is Trammell Crowe Residential. The proposal is a single structure, approximately a half a million total buildings, total square footage in the building, with 368 dwelling units, about 10,000 square feet of retail, and about 400 parking stalls. For comparison, it's similar in scale to Six Oaks, to the building you know and you're aware of. Six Oaks, meaning it takes up the whole block, and it's slightly larger than Boulevard Place, which is not a whole block. As I mentioned, it is a Type 2 application. That's a, it's an administrative review and decision. That's the same process that was followed for all the other buildings, frankly, downtown, Six Oaks, The Junction, Boulevard Place, 104, Mercantile, all those buildings that you're familiar with. It's an internal staff review, followed by a recommendation for approval or disapproval by the Community Development Director. As I mentioned, it was received in late December, December 21st. And then we put out the public notice, the Notice of Application, on January 22nd. And that was the first indication to the public that we had received an application and that they were welcome to view the plans and reports and other things that have been submitted in support of that application. That was done on January 22nd, and the public was invited to review and respond to that proposal. That Notice of Application was distributed both in three ways. Post on the property, we published it in the newspaper, and we did a direct mail to all property owners and many apartment dwellers through their management associations within 500 feet of the property limits. That's prescribed in our code. We did receive about 50 comment letters in total to go with that. And our planner, Kirsten Mant, who's assigned this project, she responded directly and individually to every one of those comment letters and provided those comment letters also to the applicant when we did our comments, when we did our first round of comments, so they may understand the community's sentiments and concerns. Since then, the staff issued their first comments again to the applicant. The applicant takes that information back, and they read through our comments, and they work on the project, and they make modifications and things like that. They recently resubmitted back for review to us on March 29th. Our response in terms of reviewing those comments is due in a couple, right around now, maybe in a week or two. It's a bit of a floating date because of the rounding up the various disciplines that have to provide comments. But it's important to note that, based on a preliminary review of that second round of commenting, there were many modifications to the building. Many of them staff feel have improved the proposal. Most notably, the southeast corner gateway that I know you're all familiar with, the pedestrian engagement aspect on that corner, improved landscape treatments on the southwest corner, and things like that. There is additional work that's needed. This process is just like other projects. It's iterative. We work through a lot of things. There's a lot of moving parts that have to be calculated. So I just want you to be aware that we are moving through that as we typically do. And I'll just look at these boxes very quickly. You followed along as I read some of those dates. Importantly, where we are now is in this box with the yellow circle around it. That's the staff review box. That's where we are right now. We'll send our comments out to the applicant. They will take whatever time they need to address them. They'll resubmit those to us, and then we'll make those available again for public, for the public to review, though not required. We're doing it just as an extra measure of communication with the neighborhood, because we received comments, a number of those comments, and we want to make sure people are aware of what's happening. I should point out, though, when I said there were 50 comments on the initial application, there were just two or three on the second one. And so people are following. They all got, they got electronic copies of plans and things. They're following. But they're, it can only take, they're following from a distance to some extent. So Kirsten has done a tremendous job in keeping people apprised of what's going on with the project. We will continue in this cycle with the applicant until we feel like we've exhausted all the things that have to be amended or modified. And then we will issue a planned action determination, which is the SEPA process response for downtown projects. If the project is found to be consistent, then a site plan approval is issued, a decision is issued, and they can move to either a building, I can't see, this is behind the screen, okay, there we go, building a grading permits, construction inspection, those kind of things, the normal building process. That decision on site plan approval is appealable to our hearing examiner. And if that occurs by anyone who's an interested party, they can do that. That would be an open record hearing before our hearing examiner. But that's effectively where we are now. It is a process that is going along pretty smoothly. We're pretty good at this. We've done this many, many times, as you're aware. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. I just want to say, Jeff, how much I appreciate your being responsive to the residents in the area and sharing their comments and responses with the developer. And it seems like people are tracking it very well, and it sounds like some of the modifications are because of that. So I want to thank you for being due diligence with our community.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Appreciate it.
All right, seeing no further questions or comments. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have up our legislative update with our Assistant City Manager, Kelly Mizoli.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Can you hear me and can you see me? Excellent. Okay. Give me just a second, and I'll share my presentation. Okay, I have for you my last legislative update for you this session. So pretty exciting. This is our final week of what has been, felt like a pretty long session that was virtual. Right now, the governor is signing some bills. He can also veto or partially veto a bill right now. He has five days to act after the legislature has approved it, both the House and the Senate. During the last five days of the session, though, the governor will have 20 days to act. So he'll have a little bit more time to look at all the bills that come across his desk here in the next five days. And those bills will likely be effective July 25th. And just as a note, unless there's an effective date that's different within the legislation itself. So just an overview of where we're at for this final week. So we expected final budgets to be released today. However, we've heard that it's likely going to be later in the week, and it may even be Saturday. So they're really working right up until the last minute there. They are focused on bills right now and going through the concurrence process between the House and the Senate on the different versions that are out there of many different bills. So that's what they are working and focused on right now. There's also some outstanding issues I just wanted to make you aware of. It was more details in your legislative report that was sent out. But as you'll see, there's the transportation revenue package. There's several different pieces of that that need to come into alignment. It's, you know, a pretty steep hill to climb at this point in the session to actually get a revenue package passed. But they are still working on that. The cap and vest system is something that we've been following, and the low-carbon fuel standard. So all of those things are still being discussed and worked on here in the last few days of the session. Additionally, a lot of time is being spent on the Blake Decision Response, and so that is in process. And there are two different versions right now in the House and the Senate that are going through the process. So of course, there, at this time, there's always some rumors of a special session. It is still, it's possible. However, at this point, there's nothing that has been confirmed. So, and it is possible either right directly after this session, or it might even be postponed into the late fall if it occurs. So just as an update on your legislative priorities, there really aren't any changes here to speak of. But we are still concerned about the 405 North End improvements. They are looking like they're going to be delayed. And that's due to the decline in toll revenues and the difficulty in bonding what revenues there are. So without having that funding source, it makes it pretty difficult to implement those North End improvements. The Bothell Way Northeast and Bothell Everett Highway Widening Project, that was our big ask for the session. As we've said throughout the whole process, we would only expect to secure these funds through a new transportation revenue package. And like I just reported, still a pretty steep hill to get that across the finish line for the legislature. So that's where we are at on this one. The North Creek Regional Trail Section 4, though, however, is in both the House and the Senate capital budgets. And so we're thinking that's still on track. So we're positive about that, as well as some monies for property cleanup through the remediation action grants, which are included in both the House and Senate proposals. So what to expect? Well, session will adjourn at the end of this week. Governor Inslee will have those 20 days to either sign into law, veto, or partially veto, which just means that he's able to veto entire sections, not individual lines of any legislation. So he'll take his 20 days to do that as he needs to. And then you will receive a final report here at your May 18th council meeting. And this will be the in-depth report from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, our lobbyist. And we are hopeful that we might actually get to see Shelley Heldler at this meeting. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that she'll be with us, along with Brianna Murray, who's just done a tremendous job this session. So in the home stretch here, you know, that's all I have for you this evening. Any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer. Wonderful.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Thank you. Oh, I am seeing a few.
Just no question.
I believe Deputy Mayor froze up.
And it looks like it. We'll go to Councilmember Thompson in the meantime.
Thank you, Mayor. Kelly, I just wanted to say thank you for these, like, I didn't actually have any questions, but I enjoy them, and they've been really helpful to us. And I didn't want you to, like, present it to, like, a rousing round of nothing. So thank you. It is really appreciated.
I appreciate that, Councilmember, and I appreciate you being so active throughout this whole legislation or legislative session and speaking on behalf of the city and the legislative agenda that we have for the city. Thank you.
All right. Well, I can only imagine the deputy mayor was going to say something very similar. So thank you for the presentation and the report out. And hopefully, we'll get the deputy mayor back.
I'd be more than happy. I can reach out to, I'd be happy to reach out to Deputy Mayor following the council meeting and see if there's anything in particular I can help her with.
Yeah. All right. On to our next item. We have our Council Committee Reports. Does anyone have a report they'd like to make? Oh, there it is. Yeah, put it maybe right in front of your face or in front of your shirt. Oh, look at that. That's perfect. 100% right there. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that everybody's getting the...
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, everybody's getting the, uh, notes that I'm sending, uh, through Laura to, to everyone on the pick meetings and, and other meetings that I'm attending. Just want to make sure you guys are getting those. And if there's any questions or concerns or comments that you want to me to make back to pick, it's important that we, uh, we have open communication and dialogue so I can get that, that information back to them. This last meeting, uh, I want to thank, uh, Aaron and Eddie Lowe, uh, for, uh, an update, um, on the, uh, city's position on some of the transportation stuff, uh, throughout the city. It was hugely important, that update that they gave me, to be able to go and, and present Bothell's position, um, at FCA at the pick, especially, you know, having 38 cities sitting around the table. To hear Bothell's perspective, I think is important. Um, and so when we do our work regionally, it's important that we have, kind of have an understanding and make sure that we're representing all seven of us as well as perspectives from the city. So just want to make sure you guys know I'm sharing that information. And please do, uh, feel free to reach back out to me and/or through Laura, get me information, uh, that's important to you. So thank you.
Welcome back, Deputy Mayor.
Technical difficulty, sorry about that.
So yeah, we're just doing committee reports if you have one.
Yeah. Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Appreciated hearing Councilmember McNeil's reports. He's always on it.
All right. Okay, uh, so we will move on to visitor comments. So in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's emergency proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comments in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all of the city council members as part of the record. So city clerk, I believe we do have.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Yes, we have a number of them. Um, we did receive five written comments, so I'll go through that list first. Um, Ellen Jacobson wrote in regarding AB 21-061, the Civic Center Lot. Patrick Hermato wrote in regarding hazard pay for grocery workers. Jess Blanch from Enterprise Community Partners wrote in regarding AB 21-061, the Civic Center Lot. George Ahern wrote in regarding AB 21-062, which is the Main Street item. And Mallory Van Alberma, the Housing Development Consortium, she wrote in regarding AB 21-061, the Civic Center Lot. And council should have received those written, um, comments and they will be made part of the record. So then we have a number of people that, um, signed up to speak live tonight. So the first one is Christian Joyner with the Bothell United Methodist Church. And you will each, um, as we panel them in, we will each give them each three minutes. Hi, Reverend Joyner, you may begin at any time. You're on mute though.
When I was rejoining, it was, I didn't hear you, what you were saying. So I'm ready to go?
Yep, you're ready to go. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and city staff. Thank you for all you do for the community. I'm Reverend Kristen Joyner. I'm one of the pastors at Bothell United Methodist Church and a 30-year Bothell resident. Tonight, please support an option that was not presented in the city manager's memo. We'd like you to vote that the city staff enter into good faith negotiations with us on the property. There's no reason to accept or decline our expression of interest at this point. I've had many conversations over the years with Arch, with city staff, with North Urban Human Services Alliance, Housing Development Consortium, and with affordable housing developers. Last April, we held an open forum with interested developers. Five affordable housing agencies set representatives to that meeting. They agreed our project was rational, well-visioned, clear and thoughtful. And all of them said that until we owned property, it was too early in the process for them to commit to being a partner. Affordable housing developers are looking for free land to build on, and that is in essence our plan. Therefore, first we must purchase property before we enter into an agreement with the developer. In addition, once we have site control, we have a prepared MOA with an agency who has the expertise in city and faith community real estate transactions. Their role will be the feasibility and due diligence. The process could be for us to negotiate the terms of the PSA. Then under that site control, the consultants would do those studies up to and including the feasibility project pro formas. Upon closing, we would then enter into an agreement with the developer. This is how affordable housing community multi-partnered projects work. To be clear, we are in conversations with affordable housing developers whose names you would recognize that have expressed interest. Regarding the community center, we have some very exciting ideas on what that ground floor community space could look like. It could look like music and art space with a market deli that's a training program for people exiting homelessness or the judicial system. We're familiar with a Fair Start consultant for that kind of project. An important aspect is that it be a place where people can access human services. This could be a small satellite office for a multi-service agency such as the Muslim Community Resource Center or Hope Link, or it could mean it's a rotating set of agencies or weekly walk-in human services fairs. This is not planned in any concrete way for a very good reason. The Bothell Urban Community of 4,000 residents is still being developed. There is not yet a downtown neighbors association, and we haven't had all the community conversations that are needed to help decide. Regarding the below-market offer, price is always something that is negotiated in a real estate transaction. Parking, density and lot size in this case are all areas that could be negotiated. Regarding parking, remember we're building for future needs and as Bothell thrives, transit and employment options increase. And people who live and work downtown will not have the same car ownership levels that we've had in the past. In order to add affordable housing for the city housing strategy, you could give land to a developer right now. But instead, we'd like to give you money for it. City-owned property should not be used as a savings account. City property should be used for the people. And what the people need are affordable housing options and access to welcoming, flexible, creative community spaces. Please direct city staff to continue negotiating with us on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up we have Patrick Sullivan.
Hi, sorry, can, can you see me?
I can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm almost, okay. Good evening, City Council. Thanks so much for taking the time, uh, to, to hear me out here. So I'm Patrick Sullivan, Director of Real Estate Development for Habitat for Humanity in Seattle, King County. I wish to voice my support for the proposal put forth from Bothell United Methodist Church for the disposition of the Civic Center Lot for Affordable Housing, which we will be addressing later in this council meeting. As the housing crisis continues to worsen in Seattle, in the Seattle metro area and throughout King County, it is opportunities like these which present the most compelling and direct opening for cities like Bothell to take immediate and meaningful action to increase the supply of affordable units to persons and families earning low incomes in the community. Land availa, land availability has become the biggest challenge to affordable housing development. As the population in the area continues to increase, the market value of property increases in kind. This presents a seemingly insurmountable barrier to the creation and preservation of affordable housing. City-owned property like the Civic Center site offer development opportunities that Habitat for Humanity has successfully executed upon in other cities in the county. These unique affordable developments are win-win for all parties involved. The city can provide and ensure permanently affordable units through restrictive covenants and Habitat's utilization of our land trust. Community nonprofits can provide their services. And lastly, those in need of opportunities not allotted to them by the market have a chance to grow and thrive in their community. Habitat is actively searching for opportunities like this throughout the east, east side of Lake Washington, an area we've identified in our strategic plan as a focal point for needed affordable housing development. In this instance, Bothell, Bothell has the opportunity to take a powerful step towards providing affordable housing to the community. Habitat for Humanity, along with our community partners, is positioned to respond with the required resources and experience to execute on these development opportunities and to deliver affordable and permanently affordable housing units. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Nicole Dormer. Just a second. Thank you, Nicole. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members and city staff. My name is Nicole Dormer. I'm a member of Bothell UMC and have worked in construction management in affordable housing for many years. My first construction job was actually at St. Brendan's 20 years ago, just up the hill from City Hall. Over the years, I've worked with and for affordable housing developers, city governments and general contractors. They all represented different interests, but when they were able to recognize that those interests had many common goals, they were able to negotiate in good faith to accomplish great things for their community they never would have accomplished on their own. The reason they're able to accomplish more together is because it addresses one of the main obstacles in affordable housing development, the constraint of resources. If the city of Bothell were to develop the affordable housing it needs on its own, it would use significantly more time and money than if it were able to form a partnership on the basis of common goals. Fortunately, Bothell UMC is bringing expertise, community engagement and a significant amount of money to the table. We also have Marty Penhaligan on our Bothell Urban Team, who is the founder and president of Pace Engineers. He brings over 40 years of experience working for the city and local development community, having been the principal civil engineer for the North Creek Development and many other projects. Pace has completed over 100 projects within the city and currently has on-call contracts with the city for surveying, stormwater design and development reviews beside several utility design contracts. Pace was also the civil engineer of record for addition apartments developed by Terragon Development, which is located within two blocks of the site we are proposing to purchase from the city. Marty brings these resources and experience to our project, so any challenges associated with development in the downtown core are well-known. For these reasons, I urge the city council to use the community resources wisely and, uh, and urge the city staff to continue negotiations with Bothell UMC. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Carrie Westerback.
There we go. Can I be seen and heard? All right, there we go. Evening.
Thanks.
My name is Carrie.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, um, councilmembers and staff. My name's Carrie Westerback, and though I'm a member of the Planning Commission, tonight I'm speaking as a resident and a member of Bothell UMC. I'm also in the church's advisory, advisory group for the Bothell Urban Project, which is, uh, seeking to get the civic, a piece of the Civic Center Lot. First, I encourage you to vote that the city staff, uh, enter in good faith negotiations with us on the Civic Center property. There's no reason to accept or decline the expression of interest at this point. Bothell's made affordable housing a high priority for years now, and it's more urgent than ever. This project could be a big win-win for the city. One of the council's goals is to create much more needed, uh, more, excuse me, affordable housing in Bothell. And this can also be found prominently in our city's comp plan housing strategy, specifically housing affordability goals and policies HHS P14 and HHS P15. Affordable housing is desperately needed. The city can't afford to build it, so let us help you get it done. The city envisioned a community center as something to benefit the entire community on this lot. Our project is such a facility. Unlike the hotel that was to be built there, our proposal would create a ground floor designed to build community and create a hub where services can be delivered to residents in need. What better place to do this than the City Hall block with affordable apartments above? Our city is missing such a place, and we stand ready to build this community humanity. To be clear, we're asking only to purchase about a third of the site, specifically the grassy knoll to the east of the City Hall garage driveway. And this is uncontaminated land, unlike the other corner, ready to develop. While the rest of the land is cleaned up, we could be developing a community service center and affordable homes on this part of the property. By state law, the city can sell their land for any price they deem sufficient. It's common to see government-owned land sold or give even given, uh, excuse me, even granted to nonprofit developers to build affordable housing. And the RCW's referenced in the agenda packet don't require the city to sell for a specific price or profit. Again, repeating another speaker, city property should, property should be used for people. The people need our affordable housing options and access to welcoming, flexible, creative community spaces. And, uh, excuse me. This is a value-add proposition, not a loss for the city. It's not unlike the sale of Lot A to Imagine Housing. If this project is envisioned as a place where people of all ages to live, not just seniors, and we'd provide a ground-level component that can be accessed by the entire community. So tonight, we ask you to please direct city staff to continue negotiating with us on this project. The city and larger community of Bothell have so much to gain. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up we have Rob Beam. Mr. Beam, there you go.
Good evening. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Council, staff. My name is Rob Beam. I'm a board member of the North Urban Human Service Alliance, a member of our housing committee. And I'm here, like the speakers who preceded me, uh, to support the city's decision to continue good faith negotiations with Bothell United Methodist Church, um, the very exciting development potential of this portion of the Civic Center property. I've, I've known, uh, Kristen for a long time, uh, understand her passion and the commitment that the Bothell United Methodist Church has towards this mission. They took a very difficult decision over a year ago to sell some of their property so that they could provide this kind of amenity to the community, to their community, in the downtown where the need was being expressed the most, where other amenities were, transportation, uh, access to other services is potentially available. Well-located property, uh, long-term, uh, very skilled community partner. Uh, speaking from the alliance's perspective, uh, I can attest to the huge demand that there is for affordable housing. Just reading a piece today, uh, from another housing organization, they noted that for every 100 families that needs affordable housing, there are about 30 units available in King County. Uh, and I'm sure all of us could think of any number of people we know who are paying more than 30% of their income for rent or people who have, uh, their own kids or their friends' kids that are looking for housing. They try and stay in and around the community they grew up in, that are finding it very, very difficult to even get out of their parents' basement. So the need is there. I think, uh, proposals like this, as the previous speakers have noted, really allow for a lot of creativity as the city seeks to fulfill its affordable housing goals. I can think of a number of projects that Arch and other North End cities have pursued, where you've had a, a very active and committed local congregational partner that's been able to bring local knowledge, passion, uh, resources to the table, uh, blending that with other broader community, broader funding resources from King County or the state, to achieve a really, a, a big win for communities. So, uh, on behalf of the Alliance and our member agencies and organizations in North King County, uh, we encourage you to, uh, direct your staff to, to continue the discussions with Bothell United Methodist Church, pursuant to the development of this site for affordable housing and really fleshing out the, uh, need opportunities there are for a community center that would serve the residents of that property, uh, and the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. All right, next up we have Joe Kim. Hello, thank you. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and city staff. I'm Reverend Joe Kim, lead pastor of Bothell United Methodist Church, and I'm pleased to be speaking to you this evening to encourage you to vote that the city staff enter into good faith negotiations with our church on the Civic Center property. Over the past few years, since at least 2018, our church has been in conversations with city staff as we have boldly dreamed of the ways we live into our purpose of becoming Christ in the community and see through our goals of transformed people, transformed relationships and transformed conditions. For over 135 years, since our first church started to gather in Alice Bothell's Parlor in 1885, we have worked with and for our greater community for the common good. From the first fire bell to the first library, to starting what is now Hope Link in East Side Baby Corner, our congregation, over 500 members and 400 active participants on Sunday mornings, currently virtual, we have all looked to the needs of the community and we have worked towards solutions and transformation. We truly believe that this is another moment in our collective history for a project like ours to take shape. With the rise of the homelessness and houselessness and the much-needed affordable housing, which we can all... and the much-needed affordable housing, which we can all agree is necessary for this moment in time, we believe that we can be a partner in what is, what is to come for the good of Bothell and for community benefit. Please understand, we know what we are good at. We listen to the community well. We care for the community well. We identify community needs, and we work with community partners to meet those needs well. So we have no illusion that we're going to be builders or developers, but in our congregation, we have been well-equipped with diverse experiences, expertise, and knowledge to develop the relationships in order to find those right partners. We are still well-equipped, and we will continue to be for the future for we believe in partnership and we believe in working together. We ask that you direct your city staff to continue negotiating with us on this project for today, for tomorrow, for the city, and for the benefit of the community we hope to one day be. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Brittany Caldwell.
Thank you, Brittany. You have three minutes.
All right. Hello, wonderful to see you all. Brittany Caldwell here on behalf of the Bothell Kenmore Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to just speak briefly about the proposal for Main Street and the potential closure. So obviously, a lot of the discussion here will be about safety and transportation, and I'll leave that to the experts, but did want to express some of the thoughts and feedback we received from some of the businesses. So first want to thank you all, both staff and council, for acting so quickly and thinking creatively. I think the closure of Main Street was just one example of the many ways that you all stepped up to support the business community throughout this pandemic. So thank you all so much for that. We have, through our outreach, received a significant number of businesses who have expressed a really positive experience from the closure to traffic, opening it up for walkability and a family gathering place, a family-friendly, of course, outdoor dining. We've also heard from the hotels that they feel very thankful for the tourism. The tourists are enjoying the closure as well. So with that said, there has been, of course, some challenges, and one of the largest challenges has been ADA access. So whether the closure is extended through October 3rd or it is considered for a permanent closure, we ask that ADA accessibility for parking be considered. So whether it is temporary ADA parking near the access points, I think that will be an important consideration moving forward. As we've expressed to staff, we do believe that every business should have a voice, and we want to hear from the business community. And so while you're thinking about this decision, if you do think that it would be beneficial to hear more of the feedback, I'm happy to share my notes that of all the conversations I've had with businesses, a lot of the notes we've received in writing about the feedback they have on the closure, I'm happy to share that. And also, we're happy to partner with the city, our chamber is happy to partner with the city in producing and delivering a survey, if that is helpful, to hear from the downtown businesses. And also, I'd just like to mention the other bit of feedback that we've received is beautification. So I think we could all do a little better. I know there is a lot of requirements for signage and barricades for safety, and that's very important. The business community does want to partner with the city and collaborate for beautification. So whether it is planters or banners or lighting or different things, businesses have come to us and offered to support that financially. So again, the chamber wants to be a partner in this. The business community wants to collaborate. And thank you for the opportunity to come here today. And since I have a few extra seconds, I will also invite everyone to our State of the City. So it is one of our annual events. It is a pleasure to have Mayor Olson, who will be speaking in addition to interim city manager Erin Lenhart, and invite all of you listening and certainly all you council members to join us as well. It is next Wednesday, and you can register on the chamber's website, bothellkenmorechamber.org. Thank you for everything you're doing for the business community, and we are here to support you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michaela Strain.
Good evening, deputy mayor, deputy mayor and city council members. I am Michaela Strain, a meat wrapper at Downtown Bothell QFC. I would like to talk about the hazard pay for grocery workers. In compensation for the extraordinary circumstances, essential workers in the city of Bothell are working under in your community. In the last two weeks, the cities of councils of Edmonds and Olympia have joined the growing list of worker-friendly cities that have passed ordinances for hazard pay. In Olympia, hazard pay passed unanimously. The Olympia City Council members called out the grocery businesses' record-breaking profits during this pandemic. They also stated that these profits are in part due to the efforts of the grocery employees working despite a lethal pandemic and above-average susceptibility and risk of exposure. For perspective, an average low-voltage electrician makes $3,992 a month. An average high-voltage electrician makes $6,350 a month. Why the difference of 2,358? Because the hazards, because of the hazard and hazardous, hazards and risks of working on high voltage are so much greater than low voltage. Grocery workers in your community started out 2020 as low-voltage workers and shortly after took on all the risks and hazards of a high-voltage electrician with none of the pay. Despite being deemed essential workers, our employers, our employers in turn have not compensated us for all the risks we've taken and hazards we face. On behalf of the essential grocery workers in Bothell, I ask that the Bothell City Council consider bringing an ordinance to the table to reward hazard pay for grocery workers. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Last on the list that I'm showing is Hillary Long.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and city staff. My name is Hillary Long, and I'm here to give you a quick update on, from the Arts Commission. And first, I would like to introduce myself as the new chair of the Arts Commission, and I'm excited and ready to lead the commission into the next year. The vice chair remains Katrina Sather, and youth commissioner Kylie Ching has taken on the secretary role. And I would like to congratulate Kylie on her appointment and say that we are glad to have Katrina remain our vice chair. We have an update as we have two new members, Mary Beth Tark and Kobe Zeifman. They have diverse backgrounds and are very supportive as the Arts Commission continues to grow and can engage with the community. We have been discussing some summer programming and are working to recommend to the council. We're working on COVID-safe summer activities that will bring the community together, possibly a chalk art event. So stay tuned, more to come. And I did want to say thank you to each of you. We appreciate the support and recognition of the arts as an integral part of building a flourishing and economically viable city, and we are interested in hearing from you and at any time about what you are dreaming of and wishing for for the arts in Bothell. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I'm showing on our sign-up sheet, Mayor Olson, but I'm not sure if anybody else in the audience would like to speak. If so, could you please use the raise your hand function, and we will panel you in. That's all I'm showing, Mayor Olson.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. I will, there we go. Councilmember Agnew.
I move we pass the consent agenda.
Councilmember Thompson.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Agnew to pass the consent agenda with a second by councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none. City clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes 6-0 with Councilmember Dorr absent and excused.
All right. We are moving along at a good pace here. I don't know if we have the next, if we have the chief with for the next presentation yet. All right, so we will move on to AB 21-059. So we have a presentation on the North Sound Radar Program in consideration of a memorandum of agreement with Casey, King County Council of Community and Human Services for the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. So yeah, I'll turn it over to you, chief.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, and city council members. Tonight, we're excited to have Brooke Butner, our radar navigator manager, with us to provide a program update. And following that presentation, I will be asking the city council to consider for approval an agenda bill that will provide continued funding for our program through 2022. But before we get into Brooke's presentation, I'd like to provide a little background on the radar program. As most of you are aware, the radar program began in 2017 as a collaborative effort between the Center for Evidence-Based Policing at Georgetown University, the city of Shoreline, and the National Police Foundation. It aimed to institutionalize department-wide and regional information sharing about community members with behavioral health issues or developmental disabilities who may be at increased risk of violence or use of force and offer opportunities for outreach and connection services and resources through a mental health navigator. In early 2019, the chiefs of Shoreline, Kenmore, Lake Forest Park, Kirkland, and Bothell met to expand the program into what it is today. Each chief is on the executive team for radar, and the city of Bothell is the fiduciary for managing the grant funding through King County's Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Grant, or the MIDGRANT. So with that, I would like to welcome Brooke to provide an update on the radar program.
Hi, thanks, chief, and thank you, Mayor Olson, and council members and staff. I'm sharing my screen now. Can everybody see the big radar?
Yep.
So thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and brief you on the radar program. This is a great opportunity as we have the MOU before the council write down our agreement with the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Levy with King County. So I'm just going to go through a quick overview of what the program is, what we do, some of our challenges we've seen in the last year, kind of what it looks like in Bothell, and then if anybody has questions, I'm happy to take those as well. So radar is the Response Awareness, De-escalation, and Referral Program. As Chief Suberlich mentioned, it's a cooperative program between Shoreline, Kirkland, Bothell, Lake Forest Park, and Kenmore Police Departments. There are two primary components. Oh, the, one of the benefits of the five-city sharing is that we share the costs and the infrastructure, including the program manager, the data system, and the NHP social workers. And there are two primary components of the program. One is information sharing between the departments because we know that people cross borders up here in North King County, and the use of response plans. The response plan is a tool by which officers can share, officers and MHPs can share information about folks that may be at higher risk for use of force. The classic example of an individual that might benefit from a response plan is a person that we had in an adult family home that had a developmental disability and was a large in stature male who often approached officers for, to hug them. And through the use of a response plan, we're able to share the information before an officer goes into a situation with this individual. The officer knows that that's something that happens with this individual, and that reduces and mitigates the risk of any use-of-force incident when the individual approaches the officer physically. There are, the document provides a way to share what we call hooks and triggers, ways that an officer might de-escalate the situation with the individual. For example, talk to them about their family, or they like cars, so offer to show them your car. And then triggers to avoid. And examples of that might be to speak in a way that is calm and slow, to avoid talking about someone's family in some cases. So it just gives the officers the information and tools going into a situation to really minimize the chance of needing to have a situation where use of force becomes employed. The second primary component of the radar program is the mental health professional navigators who respond to in-progress calls when it's safe and also to outreach to referrals. So when a Bothell Police Department officer, or an officer from one of our other agencies, encounters someone in the field that has a behavioral health condition, a developmental disability, or some other social service need like housing or food insecurity, and believe that a follow-up from a social worker would be helpful, they refer over to our program, and navigator, an NHP navigator, goes out and meets with the person, just informally assesses kind of what's going on, what led 911 to be called, what led police to get involved in the situation, and then kind of try to problem-solve and direct someone back to the community of care. In the case of mental health symptoms, if mental health symptoms led to a family member calling 911 and police becoming involved, the navigator will kind of figure out where they are in the process and either reconnect them with their mental health provider or refer them to a new mental health provider so that they're not repeatedly entering into crisis and coming in contact with 911 and the criminal legal system via the police. Our funding is primarily through the Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Levy at this time, and that's, I always like to thank councilmember Dembowski when I talk about this because King County Councilmember Dembowski was pivotal in getting the MID funding to expand this program in 2019. We also have a small piece of funding that comes through the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, or WASPIC, and that is pass-through funding from the state, from the True Blood decision that is, it's a Supreme Court decision that generates contempt fines from the state Department of Human Services for failure to restore competency. And the whole goal of that funding is to keep people with mental health conditions out of the criminal legal system. So I think it's a real vote of confidence in the radar model that both WASPIC and the state want to fund radar as a way of keeping people with mental health issues in their treatment system rather than in jail. I have a few numbers for Bothell from 2020. In the city of Bothell, radar served 126 people in a total of 168 meetings. So that points to the fact that sometimes it's a crisis intervention, a navigator is going, doing some de-escalation, working with someone, and getting them to that next step pretty immediately. In other cases, our navigators are seeing someone multiple times to really to truly navigate them to the next step so that they're, they're taken care of and their care needs are met. Maybe that's making sure that they get a funding or insurance source and then get into a behavioral health program, service program. Some demographics about the folks we served in 2020. 9% in Bothell were homeless. 37% reported some behavioral health condition that impacted at least two domains of daily life. So in other words, a disabling behavioral health condition. 3% were veterans. And then I have the racial demographics there on the slide. That's something we watch pretty closely because we, we know from research into diversion programs like this that they can tend to serve more white people, and people of color can tend to be put more into the criminal legal system than the treatment system. And I'm proud to say that in the last two years when we've been collecting data, our demographics have really closely aligned with the racial demographics of our cities. And in each city, you see that. So in the city of Bothell, we see that the demographics of the folks that are served by radar very closely mirrors the demographics of the city at large. I want to share a few stories of generally that illustrate kind of what the program does and show some successful outcomes. And also just talk about this heck of a year that we've had as first responders. We, the navigator program faced the same challenges as everybody, but of course, law enforcement never, as essential workers, never stopped, and the navigators never stopped. They did transition to some telephonic follow-up whenever possible to just kind of reduce the, the risk of transmitting from one community member to another as we were going out in the community. But what, a lot of what we faced was because people lost their access to behavioral health care during this pandemic. And so people that were getting care, all of a sudden, were getting a lot less because it was via Zoom or phone, seeing their psychiatrist or their counselor a lot less and not in person. And folks that had behavioral health symptoms increased because of the pandemic had a challenge accessing care. We also saw a big increase in calls related to young people. So councilmember McCullough mentioned this isolation that young people are experiencing, and that has absolutely been our and that has absolutely been our experience. We've seen so many calls in the Radar Cities when a young person's behavior escalates to the point where a parent calls 911 because there's some danger to siblings or danger to the parents, or the kid is just so out of control that they're fearful. Law enforcement comes in, and then a social worker is that next step to kind of move things along. And one of my stories that I want to share involves a young person who, this, just that exact situation, that the family called 911 several times because this young person was behaviorally escalated to the point where the family felt siblings were at risk. And they're, they, they had nowhere to turn but 911 because they didn't know about the treatment system or what, where to turn or what to do. Our social worker, our navigator, was able to work with the family to get the child enrolled in a specialty mental health program at Children's Hospital, and while waiting for that program, get several emergency mental health appointments with a specialized children's therapist. So a really good outcome for that family. Now they're hooked into the system of care. The social workers at Children's can take it from here. Our navigators have done that, exactly that, navigated the person to the system of care, and that, and we consider that a real success. And then ideally, there will be enough support there that that kiddo won't enter into crisis anymore, and the, the 911 system doesn't get called in, that the crisis system doesn't get called in. On the other example that I wanted to share was the, a, a case of an individual who became disruptive on a metro bus. Police were called by several folks that were on the bus, as well as the driver, because this individual was acting up physically and shouting and moving his body in such a way that people felt they were at risk. 911 was called. As soon as it was safe for the navigator to engage, that was an in-progress call that the navigator went along on. Soon as it was safe for the navigator to engage, the navigator and the officer were able to just de-escalate this individual to the point where he would come off the bus, calmly talk to the navigator, and then he was referred to the Crisis Solutions Center, which is a crisis triage center that serves King County for, to receive services, to receive further de-escalation, and then again, be hooked into that community of care. I also just want to talk briefly about how Radar is, fits into this national conversation about reimagining the way we do policing, that there are models popping up all over the region and all over the country of different ways to do embedded social work and for social workers to work with police. I'm really proud of the Radar Program that, and, and our member cities, that we are kind of ahead of the curve in a way, that, as Chief Suberlich mentioned, the program started in 2017. A lot of cities are now starting to try to embed social workers in response to the social movements of the last year, and we have a few years under our belt as we build and grow this program. Our midterm future as we build and grow, as we're still kind of a baby program, just a few years old, is that we increase navigator coverage so that we have more immediate access for officers for those in-progress calls. Staffing is the concern and the challenge for all programs like this because this is not a discipline that we social workers learn in social work schools. So we're always looking for the right fit for this type of crisis-based, field-based response. And then ultimately, as we, the program becomes more robust and as our staffing allows it, we will, we plan to dispatch directly to the field with or without an officer, depending on the safety of the scene, to try to do that de-escalation, that crisis management in the field. So that's all I have. I'm not sure if there's time on the agenda for any questions, but I'm also always open to chatting offline and providing more information and more data.
Looks like we have questions. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And thank you very much, Brooke. That was a great presentation. And there's some really questions I have would be, first of all, you know, I remember when there was a 211 number. Do you remember having a 211 number years ago, instead of calling 911, people called 211? How do people know how to, do they have to go through the police or 911 to reach the navigators?
Yeah, that's such a great question. Right now, the navigator programs, the Radar Program specifically, is embedded with the police department. So yes, that does come through our, the connection with the 911 and the crisis system. 211 still exists, and in fact, there's, yep, there is some legislation at the state right now that your legislative person could speak more eloquently than I, but it's for a similar number that would be something like 188 or some, it's similar, but it would be for folks that have some kind of social service or behavioral health crisis, including community members, family members. That is, it sounds like is a really good chance of passing the legislature this year and would be accessible outside of the 911 system. So ideally, diverting people prior to entering into the crisis when they feel like 911 needs to be called.
Thank you. And I, and I know firsthand, as you mentioned, that our young people are in great need of some services for, from our social workers and our mental health professionals. So I am so glad to hear that you, if they lose their behavioral health opportunities, access to that, you are able to intervene as well. So thank you for your work, and I hope to see more navigators in the field, and, and we'll support that. I support that, I'm sure we all would. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Brooke, thank you for the presentation. That was really good, and I can, you seem really enthusiastic about this, which is great, which I love. The, so you mentioned kind of that third-way response, sending navigators into the field without needing an officer for those calls where it's appropriate. What kind of timeline are we looking at for that, and like, what are the holdups, I guess?
Yeah, great question. I would say we're looking at several years out to, to really develop the infrastructure to send people out safely. When we look at programs nationally that are doing this, there's one in Eugene, Oregon, called CAHOOTS, that sends people, is social workers, out independently, and they're over 20 years old as a program. So it takes time to get to where you, you have a couple of things in place, the dispatch protocols, decision trees to triage what is safe and what's not to send out a civilian and unarmed civilian, and then the staffing. And you know, we're in competition right now with every other city and every other fire department, and, along with the hospitals, to get good social workers. So I would say probably our primary barrier is recruiting and finding those really high-level social workers.
Awesome. I mean, have we, I assume, looked at other programs like CAHOOTS that are more mature? Are there, kind of, you mentioned some of those triage points and protocols, like, can we just steal those from them? Like, can we just do what they're doing, or do things apply differently?
There is so much nuance in each community, but we will absolutely be relying on the, the learnings and the best practices of other communities that are able to do this. The chiefs and I are always in communication with colleagues in other cities. I know Chief Suberlich and the, the other Radar chiefs are in the process of figuring out how they can talk with the chief in, down in Eugene, because he's a Washingtonian, a former chief, I understand. And we are part of National Professional Association, so we are definitely in these conversations, pulling from existing best practices, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel, but we also want to make sure that it's, that everything that we do works for our community specifically, because like I said, there's just so much nuance in this. And the chief is going to weigh in.
One other thing that really separates our program from CAHOOTS is CAHOOTS actually has a facility that they operate out of, where they actually provide that treatment. That's where it started. So one of the big challenges, and I've been preaching about this to anybody who'll listen to me for months now, is the one thing that is really missing in our region is an actual facility with beds for treatment. And that's something that has to be funded, and I don't think it can be funded just at the municipality level. It needs to be state-funded, but it is, it's hugely needed, and that is probably the biggest thing that separates our program from CAHOOTS. Our navigators are amazing at utilizing the resources that we do have available to us. But I, I think this is an interesting point. Brooke, how many beds do we have available in King County?
Yeah, there are 17 crisis triage beds for all of King County. There's one facility called Crisis Solution Center that's in South King County. It's really kind of absurd, the, the dearth of immediate access crisis triage beds. So, yeah.
Our navigators are truly moving heaven and earth to try to find places that will take these people that are in need. So if we had that, that foundational platform, that, that's the key component that's missing. You know, getting, getting navigators to respond out in the field, it, that's just a flow chart. That's just giving them a car and making sure that they can check off the safety things to get them out in the field. But it really boils down to the actual location to get them the treatment in a timely fashion. It has been so frustrating for me as a police officer to deal with people in the field who, who want to go to treatment, for example, they're ready right now, and I can't find a bed for them or a facility for maybe 45 days to two months. At that point, it, it's kind of hopeless, you know, because they're ready now, and 45 days is a lifetime when you're, when you're dealing with those kind of situation, situations. So I'll, I'll give it back to Brooke.
Yeah, that, thank you so much for, for bringing that up, because it, it kind of puts a ceiling on what we're able to do for folks that are in crisis, especially those that are living homeless. I also want to say, Chief, you reminded me of something that, a benefit that CAHOOTS has is definitely that they have a facility, but something that sets Radar apart from CAHOOTS and other similar models is that because it came from within law enforcement and the call came for more information sharing and more information going into situations with folks with behavioral health, that response plan element is really unique to Radar and unique nationally. To provide officers with that information as they're going into a situation to reduce the potential risk for use of force is really innovative and not happening in a lot of places. So that's something I really appreciate about the Radar Model.
Me too. I thought that was really cool. How much, I, I mean, right now, we're, Chief, you mentioned we're kind of capped on, like, or maybe that was you, Brooke, I don't remember. We're kind of capped on what we can do right now because of a lack of places to take people to. Is there unmet demand for navigators in our community? Like, can they do more, lacking those services to take them to?
Um, I think, I think what you're asking is could we do more for people if we had more services? And the, the answer is absolutely yes, and I think any outreach-based social worker would say the same, that we don't have enough shelter beds, we don't have enough affordable housing, and we don't have enough crisis triage beds. And so what ends up happening is that as our human services system fails people, they fall into the safety net, below the safety net, which is law enforcement. And there's not a lot that a law enforcement officer can do for a person in behavioral health crisis that's living homeless when my system, the human services system, has failed to provide the services and the bed that they need to, to heal.
So aside from, I guess, I guess the big-picture question that I'm getting at is aside from, you know, obviously advocating with other elected officials at the state and county level to provide more funding for these sorts of services, what can we do in the city to, I guess, capture some of the momentum around more restorative care instead of more policing? Like, what are things we could do as local policymakers to help move the needle?
Other folks might want to make, weigh in on this, but I have a few thoughts. One is embracing all of the different opportunities that we have as a local community to do things like affordable housing and zoning to allow services to be in our communities. As elected officials, municipal elected officials, this money for, for crisis centers often comes through commerce, so any advocacy that you can do at the state level for commerce dollars flowing into King County for additional crisis beds. Are there other folks that have thoughts about our local ability to advocate? Looks like Deputy Mayor Zorn's.
I, I just, I, I'm probably going to be on rinse, repeat, and Councilmember Thompson also brought this up, but, and I think we've talked about this before, but I think maybe as a council, when we talk to our lobbyists, we ought to talk again about that piece of bringing in our neighboring cities who are part of Navigator and lobbying together down in Olympia to get services, funding up here, triage beds up here for this part of King County. I, I think there's a lot of merit, and we ought to be putting some pressure on Olympia to take this end of Lake Washington seriously.
Would I be out of order if I commented on that?
Please do.
Okay. Yeah, we absolutely need a facility in the north end. Most of the treatment facilities that we transport to are in the Kent area down south, and I think it's probably because of the cost of the land when they, when they developed it down there. But that, that is probably the biggest thing that we see as a need. You know, I think that we have a pretty good history of working with those in need and getting them the resources that we can. I think the navigators have just taken that to a whole new level, and I'm, I'm excited to eventually get that to a program where they're going to be able to respond in a vehicle to the field and, and be able to do that on their own, and then only utilize us when there's a danger that arises. I think that is a good place to get to. Right now, I think with our calls for service, the navigators that we currently have, it's, it's working. The biggest challenge that we're dealing with is just getting those qualified people because we are truly battling with everybody to try to find them, because everybody, therapists and mental health professional, professionals are staying really busy right now. So I'm hopeful with the program and partnering with Shoreline College with their navigator training, that we're going to see some results from that and be able to start seeing more candidates to fill those positions.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you for your presentation, Brooke. I, I think the Navigator Program's a game changer, that, that's what I think personally. It, it appears, though, that Seattle Police is, is pushing off a lot of the mental health calls to the fire. You guys both have social workers. How can we work together and get a better product out there? And is there a chance that you could be doing that in the near future?
I might be able to address some of that, and then I'll hand it off to Brooke. One of the challenges with Seattle is they lack direction. They are all over the board on, on trying to solve this problem down there. Shoreline, again, they, they partnered with Georgetown University to really kind of come up with a, a solution to a problem that just giving something to fire doesn't solve. And because of, one of the challenges we deal with that is HIPAA. So we, we don't get the information that we need to put a response plan together, and that's the whole foundation of the Radar Program, is because we don't want to go in blind. We want to have as much information as possible on the people we're dealing with so we, we know what the triggers are. We, we have some good information before we go in. We can de-escalate by staging. We can make some phone calls. That information, Seattle, in essence, just kind of, we're out, and I'm not about to do that. This is too valuable. It's proven to be too valuable for us. I think partnering with FIRE is key, and, but you know, we partnered with FIRE for years on a lot of things. I mean, we, we end up at the same calls oftentimes, so I, I think there's room for that. My big concern is the HIPAA component, though, because that's where the actual de-escalation document comes from.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're taking all that information down and all the triggers down, and then you're putting it somewhere where somebody else can, can view it, there's your HIPAA right there. I mean, that's a violation of the HIPAA. There's got to be a way around a lot of this. There's no question in my mind about that, and I think, I think we can come up with something. But mental health issues aren't going away, and we need to address them.
Absolutely.
I just will add quickly, I see there's another, at least one other question, that Shoreline Fire has the Mobile Integrated Health Unit that is staffed by social workers and EMTs, and also serves other cities up here in North King County, and we are working with them, and just thinking through what are our areas of expertise, where do we really have the, the most impact, how can we share information in a way that's respectful of people's privacy rights, and make sure that we're all working on, kind of rowing in the same direction when we're working with the same people, which we often are, and, and playing to our specialties. So the Mobile Integrated Health Unit works so well with older adults with things like chronic falls that do result in 911 calls. I, I will share an I will share an example in Lake Forest Park where we had an older adult who would frequently call 911. And sometimes because of what she said, the police would also come. And so she had social workers with the police, social workers with various other providers and social workers with the Fire Department, all working with her. So we all kind of came together and said, what's our long-term plan to make sure that she has what she needs in her home? FIRE has the most, the best connections with the world of older adults and the services. So we'll, they'll take the lead on this one, that kind of thing. So we're definitely partnering and always looking at how we can institutionalize those partnerships.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. And Brooke, thank you for the, the presentation, hard work. Chief, thank you for your continued hard work and amazing work on this Radar Navigator program. You know, got to make sure we give a shout out to Councilmember Nabowski and all the hard work and efforts he's, he's put forward in the, the funding for this program. And, you know, when I was part of the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee, we often heard about this program, this Radar Navigator program and what it would mean to our region. And it is now a regionally known program. And hopefully we can take, you know, that, the knowledge and the, and the information that we have and the special talent that's working within our community now and use that to, to bring some additional great talent. We don't want to do it quickly. We want to make sure we get the right talent to service our community. But, but hearing you speak about the, the facilities that are required and hopefully finding facilities on the North End, maybe we can find ways to partner and, and work together to bring that facility so that we can service those people in our community. I had a couple of quick questions. One, one is around, I noticed that there's five cities listed that, that we're partnering with, you know, Bothell, I think Kirkland, Shoreline, Lake Forest Park. And I, what, what was the fifth one? Did I name them all?
Kenmore?
Kenmore. Out of those, those departments, how many of them are, are actually departments like Bothell? Or how many of them are King County that just are contracted departments?
Do you want me to take this one, Chief? There, Kenmore and Shoreline are both King County Sheriff's Office contract cities. But honestly, the, in the way that we work together with them, it's really similar to the municipal police departments because they have their officers that are interested in riding with the Navigator. They have, within their departments, they do great education. Their chiefs have been really committed to this. Actually, the chief for Kenmore was formerly a Radar deputy at the City of Shoreline until he was promoted over there and is really passionate and committed. The one benefit of that is that when we do any kind of protocol that's internal to Shoreline, it works for Kenmore too. So it's, we get a little double benefit, but does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answered my question and I selfishly was asking that question because I wanted to prove a point about working, not only partnering with other departments, but different types of departments. And one of the things that comes to mind is we are a community that spans two counties. We span King County and Snohomish County. And, and I would like somebody to answer this so that our community understands it. Does this Radar Navigator program also help our Snohomish County residents as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's, it's important. It's an important message, I think, we need to get into the community that we know no boundaries, right? And this program is helping not only our King County residents in Bothell, but also our Snohomish County residents. And if we want to take it a bit further, you know, maybe you or the chief can, can explain, is there, is there opportunities to, to partner with Snohomish County and/or Snohomish County cities that are surrounding us? You know, as an example, you know, we're talking the Canyon Park area, Mill Creek, things like that. How can we, how can we partner to ensure that we're, we're, we're taking this program a little bit further and, and touching all of our residents?
Brooke, you want to go first and then I can chime in? You're on, you're on me?
That's the classic Zoom error. Excuse me. In terms of partnering with Snohomish County, we definitely are, work with partners in Snohomish County, including their designated crisis responders. So that's the folks that are able to detain someone under the involuntary treatment act. So we work with the designated crisis responders in both King and Snohomish County. One thing we haven't ever explored is working with electeds or funding sources in Snohomish County. But that's an opportunity, that could be an opportunity in the future. And then, yeah, thinking through what neighbor cities, how we can work with them. Because there is, because as this discipline emerges of co-response social work, there, we are all kind of figuring it out as we go. There's a really strong network of providers and program managers that I work with very closely. So I work with the, the folks that are doing this type of work in other cities and of course, open to working with cities that, that need to take that next step.
And that's amazing. Go ahead, Chief.
I'm sorry. We, we designed the Radar program so that it can be easily duplicated. That, that's the goal. So it can be picked up and dropped in Yaphreza. It can be picked up, dropped off in Spokane. It, it could be developed up in Skagit County. Because it's the same basic players in all these different regions. It, it's not that complicated. The trick is trying to get the funding. So, and, and then get the employees, get the navigators out there. So expanding into Snow County, yeah, absolutely. My goal is at the state level to have the response plans shared statewide in the statewide system. Because people travel and that is kind of the foundation of our program. So I, I can easily see this expanding. I, I plan on trying to push this program to a state level as, as it continues to expand.
Well, thank you for that, Chief, and I just, I hope we can find ways to work together to ensure that our community knows about this program. I know we talk about it here at council. I don't know how many people watch our council meetings, but it is amazing work. You know, I've gotten to see it firsthand. It's amazing work. Seeing what you guys do to help people within our community. I'll just close with, you know, the second to last slide resonated with me because it basically talked about increased access to the field, which means increased access to our community, our residents who need to help the most. So I, I applaud you for, for all your hard work and effort. And if there's anything, you know, hopefully you let us know what we can do to help support you at the state and even national level, because I think we're, we're all going to start to see a change and a shift and finding ways to work together to help our police departments whom which I know serve us well. So thank you so much, both of you, for all your hard work and dedication to our community.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorn's?
Doug on it. Councilmember McNeil, I was sitting here going, I was sitting here going, okay, can't ask that question. Somebody else asked it. Can't answer that, which is great. I just, I just have to say, this is a very proud and encouraging update here. And all my questions were answered. So thank you to my council, fellow council members who did that. And I would also like to echo what Councilmember McNeil said. However we can help, this is a great program and we, we want it. I just really appreciate the depth that this is really genuinely supporting the community and building community, real community. So however we can help, let us know, please. And thank you for the presentation. It was fabulous. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Chief, and I thank you to the police department as well for their ongoing, just champion of, of this type of work.
Thanks for the hard work.
Thank, thank you both very much. Appreciate the, the presentation. And as the deputy mayor said, you know, a great council asked a lot of these questions, so all my questions were answered. You know, Chief, I really appreciate you speaking about what it would take to get us to the next level, what, you know, we need to build upon this. Because, you know, just simply adding more of what we have isn't always the answer. So having that, the beds and the facilities, it sounds like it, it's crucial to getting us to that next stage that we're looking for. Because yeah, this definitely seems like an avenue that can take some of the, the pressure off of the police. So I, I think this is a crucial tool that we need to develop further. I think many of the council members here spoke about doing what we can at our level, but also at the state level to try and get those funds, to try and get the support. I, I think it's there. It just needs to be pushed and, you know, brought to center stage on what a great program this is. So I appreciate you for educating us further and, and giving us that knowledge and that path forward.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Because I don't do agenda bills very often. I'm going to kind of work my way through this process the best I can. So if you forgive me, if there's no additional questions, I, I guess I can lead in with this. With this agenda bill tonight, I'm asking the city council to authorize the interim city manager to sign the memorandum. We have a question.
No, they're, they're just queuing up to make the actual motion after you.
Okay, sorry.
Come in and speak. No, you're doing a great job.
So with this agenda bill tonight, I'm asking the city council to authorize the interim city manager to sign the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Community and Human Services and the City of Bothell so that we may receive $780,000 in grant funding for the Radar Navigator program through 2022.
Well said. All right, Councilmember Agnew?
I hope you don't mind, Chief, if I try this one. We recommend authorizing the city manager, interim city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement between Department of Community and Health Services and the City of Bothell.
Councilmember McNeil?
Second.
All right, great. Thank you both. So we have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to authorize the interim city manager to sign the memorandum of agreement between Department of Community and Human Services and the City of Bothell. With a second by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. City clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorn's?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Absolutely, yes.
Pass the six zero with Councilmember Door, absent and excused.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, coming and speaking with us, making us smarter and wiser every day.
And, and we really appreciate the support. Thank you so much.
All right, so let's take a, a ten-minute break. Come back at eight thirteen and we will start up with AB twenty-one dash zero six zero. All right, we are back. And we will be moving on to AB twenty-one dash zero six zero. So we have a presentation on the Begin at Bothell Street Sense Conversion Studies Guaranteed Return on Marketing Investments during the contract year of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So let's see. So I'll turn it over to our tourism manager, Danae McGee.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Danae McGee, and I am the Tourism Manager here at the City of Bothell. I am with you tonight to introduce Ralph Thompson, who is the Executive Director of Travel and Tourism at Street Sense Consulting. Ralph will be presenting for council review the conversion study of visitor spending in twenty nineteen. Before Ralph begins, though, I would like to provide a bit of background on how we got to where we are today. Council adopted the twenty nineteen Tourism Spending Plan and contract with Street Sense Consulting to develop and implement a marketing strategy using the new brand Begin at Bothell and the award-winning website developed in twenty eighteen. The City of Bothell Lodging Tax Advisory Committee selected Street Sense to be its marketing agency of record for two primary reasons. One, they specialize in marketing to travel and tourism industry, to the travel and tourism industry. And two, they guarantee a return on marketing investment. Lodging tax revenues can be used to support activities, operations, and marketing strategies to increase tourism and overnight stays in Bothell. According to the Revised Code of Washington or the RCW, expenditures from lodging to activities in three areas, which are tourism marketing, events and festivals designed to attract tourists, and operations of tourism-related municipal or nonprofit facilities, such as a convention or visitor center. The twenty nineteen Street Sense contract is focused on tourism marketing. So at this time, I'm going to share my screen with you, and I'll turn it over to Ralph, so he can go over the results from the Street Sense Conversion Study for twenty nineteen.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and share some great results. I know that during the course of the last year, we've all been hit by this in the travel and tourism industry, maybe more so as it touches so many different hospitality pieces, especially restaurants and hotels. So we want to share with you the results that we've achieved and some additional learning as well. So I'm going to try to go through this, and I want to let you know that this is a presentation that's available to anybody that you want to share this with, and we'll just move quickly through it. This is just a recap. After doing the award-winning, creating the award-winning website, we needed to create a marketing outreach plan, and so we began in two thousand nineteen, as we do with most destinations, where we've created new branding and a website. We're going to start with those activities that will build traffic to the website, because that is, the website is the primary workhorse for destination marketing. So we did that. The second workhorse is a really solid database of opt-ins to receive ongoing communications. And so we also focused on building that database quickly so that we could be able to have two ways to communicate, the traffic on the database and the traffic on the website. And then we supported all that with social marketing to be able to create posts and blogs, posts to the blogs, to be able to maintain a level of awareness for some earned media as well. So all of that was successful, and you see the results there, and we delivered, over-delivered on most of the things that we promised. And that resulted in exceeding our guarantee. So let's talk about how that guarantee is calculated. Next slide. So we have done now about two hundred and sixty-five independent conversion studies from Texas A&amp;M University's Department of Recreation Parks and Tourism Sciences, headed by Dr. James Patrick, who is one of the top five tourism researchers in the country. So we use that to validate for two reasons. One, to do the conversion study on both the database as well as the website traffic, and to be able to validate what the return on marketing investment was and the visitor spending number. But in addition to that, there's a lot of rich data that comes from this study, and the study is, has a plus or minus six percent error factor at a ninety-five percent confidence level. So it's highly projectable. Next slide, this is what we guaranteed versus what we delivered. We guaranteed you incremental visitor spending of four point seven million dollars and a return on your marketing investment of eighteen dollars for every dollar invested through us. What we delivered was five point eight million and twenty-two to one return on marketing investment. So we're very pleased to be able to have done that, especially under the difficult times. Now, we'll say that this started in nineteen, and then it moved into first part of twenty. So we were able to realize the benefit of at least the first part of that period with a new website and really doing what we wanted to do, and then all of a sudden COVID hit, and we see air travel and hotel lodging declining. But next slide, and we'll break this down for you. Now, the incremental impact, this breaks out the revenue of visitor parties and incremental economic impact from the two different primary sources that we were using as outreach channels, the website traffic and the email database. So you can see how that five point seven million broke down, and you can also see what the economic impact is on that five point seven million. Next slide. Now, what we shared with you is what we take credit for, which is, we call incremental economic impact and incremental spending, and that is a subset of total impact. This is what you should take credit for, for everything, because incremental means that the consumer had not decided to take a trip and was considering it, but hadn't taken a trip until they reported receiving and using the communications that we provided them with. So that doesn't mean that many others had already decided to convert to a visit, and many others decided to visit without even seeing our communication. So the total tracked performance is fifteen point three million dollars with an economic impact of twenty-two point one million. You can see the number of paid room nights and the number of visitor parties that fulfilled those room nights. Next. Now we get into learning. This is a quick visitor profile. This is a seventy-seven percent skewed to female, and that's not out of the ordinary, except we usually see a little less than that, usually in the sixty to sixty-five percent range. And we suspect that that's because of the impact of the girlfriend's getaway and the sip and stay program, and we think that that's probably what skewed that a little bit more female. You can see that the predominant age range is for aging millennials and Gen Xers and with decent household income. The surprise for us is that twenty-nine point nine percent traveled with children. We had not anticipated that significant amount of people traveling with children, and we'll see more of that as we get into the learning that we had. Next slide. So these are conversion rates, and what you typically see on that, remember the total amount that you take credit for, a conversion rate in the forty-five percent range is decent conversion rate. We see them range from forty to fifty-five percent in total. And our incremental conversion rate is good considering the time. We'd like to see that at nineteen percent, but fifteen percent is acceptable for us. Can see overnight visitors is a nice, healthy number, and we can see the number in a visitor party and the other data there, which shows the number of day trips. Interesting information, if you take the overnights and the day trips and you add them, one would think they should add up to a hundred percent, but this is over a hundred percent because there's a combination of day trips and overnights by same visitor parties. So you'll have many more people are coming and staying on a couple of overnight trips, and then they're also spending in day trips to it. So really good connection to the brand, and we're very pleased with that because we can then leverage that as we come out of this pandemic and really go after the overnight visitors even more with a robust number of day trippers. Next. Reason for the visit. We had a healthy amount of general vacations as well as getaway weekends, and then certainly the number of folks visiting friends and family. That's right in line with what we see with other conversions, with the exception of beach destinations, and the beach destinations are up in the fifty percent range. The other interesting number here is we're pleased to see that there was no business travelers in our conversion study. The reason we think that's good is because that means that we're not spending any marketing dollars because business travelers are coming anyway. So that's great that that doesn't show up there. We like to keep that to a minimum. The only time we will do that is if we have a program that encourages business travelers to stay over the weekend. Next. Visitor domicile. What you would expect in a visitor domicile, local, and then Washington, California, and Oregon, the outlier is Arizona. We suspect that is folks that winter in Arizona and are coming to take a visit to the Pacific Northwest. Next. Travel distance, certainly during this period of time, this is skewed a little bit. You've got over eighty percent of the folks are drive traffic within five hundred miles. That is primarily influenced by what's happened as a result of the pandemic, as we saw that happen in the early part of two thousand twenty, and as that began to get even more pronounced, then you've got a lot of people that are, those that are taking a vacation are driving. They're not flying anywhere. Air travel dropped to like about twenty percent. Next. We do think that travel outside of the thousand-mile radius or in the thousand-mile radius is probably air traffic before it's shut down and the cruise lines, because we know that there are day trippers that are coming from those ships to go to the wineries and then enjoy Bothell. So learning reason for not traveling, this is all very good. You would expect that thirty-three percent decided not to travel because of COVID, understandable. Planning a future visit of thirty-one point one percent, that is high relative to what we've seen in the past. And what we will share with you is we've done follow-on studies with those that say they intend to visit, and about sixty-four point two percent of those wind up actually visiting the destination. So what we've got here is a little pent-up demand that when they decide to travel, which people are, we'll talk about that in a minute, but people are really cranking up to do heavy travel now. And then selected another destination, twenty-one percent, and then nineteen percent are residents. And that's coming from the day trippers that are coming in through the website traffic. Next slide. In terms of competitors, I don't think there's any surprises here. These are your primary competitors, and what we're going to continue to do is promote. Bothell is a great place to locate, and you actually have more space. This is where COVID is, I know we hate this pandemic, but the impact on consumers is that they want more spaces, and they want to be away from large urban areas. So it's a great place for people to get away and take a break. Next. Leisure party trip reason, romantic getaway, families, and girlfriends getaway. We weren't surprised by girlfriends getaway or romantic. We think that Bothell is a wonderful place to start and enjoy that as your base camp as you explore the Pacific Northwest. But then we think the family number is really encouraging, and we'll have some recommendations for that. But then we think the family number is really encouraging and we'll have some recommendations for that. So what you're going to see here on this chart, and I'm not going to go through everything here, but I want to just explain it. The first column of those people that are interested in that experience as a core driver for their vacation or their getaway, they all believe that you're going to be able, that's the percentage of those that think you're going to be able to provide that experience for their trip. And then the second column is the column that says you met or exceeded their expectation during their trip. So the really good news here is, is not only do you have a lot of core drivers that they think that you're going to be able to deliver well on, but in fact you actually do deliver well. So this gives us tremendous opportunities in terms of being able to articulate in our messaging and content what all the great values are in Bothel. Next. The last one is, this slide is the remainder of those, as you can see, the interest declines, but still with the declining interest in the prospective traveler, you still have met or exceeded their expectations for those that did take the trip and experienced those activities. That's fantastic for you. It's all good about you being positioned for when we're ready to roll out. And incidentally, just sharing with you what we did and we've done this with all of our clients in different ways that would help them. In April of 2020, we agreed to take our contract and spread it over two years, continue to work, but spread it over two years so it would provide some relief during this period of time when there weren't as many people traveling. And so we used that primarily in social and we had finished the campaign of building opt-ins to the database so we could communicate with them and we could have low cost communications through social and be able to stretch that budget over a two-year period. The next slide. So other important learnings here, this is great news, first time visitors. We usually see that in the high single digit or in the 10 to 12% range. So you've got a nice incidence of first time visitors. What that tells us is because of the favorability that you have in terms of the experience when they come to visit you, that they're going to go back and they're going to talk with people and you can see further down there that they would describe Bothel positively to others. And they're sharing information at a really good pace. So what that means is you're keying up these folks to come visit you. And when they come visit, they spend a lot of time on their trip and multiple trips. And so that creates a great lifetime value for you, especially if we can get them in your database. Because the email marketing, well, a lot of people, it's not a real exciting thing for marketers to be able to do that, but it's really a workforce for you. And it creates the highest lifetime value because our studies is people stay in the database for five, six, seven years and they take multiple trips. You had 10 day trips in the last year by visitors. That's incredible. Next. So let's talk about recommendations. I put the top five here and then I've got another one that's come up in the last month. We need to, because of what we've seen here in these exciting core drivers that consumers believe you can deliver on and you actually do, we can create, use the tool that you have on your websites called Van Wango and it is an itinerary builder. So you can create the winery trail. You can create the brew trail. You can create the outside water sports trail. You can create all kinds of trails that really are organizing all that you have into separate itineraries. And we call them trails or experiences. And this company, Van Wango, manages the whole thing, gets the community businesses to participate in it, builds it and it's all there on the website and then they train the businesses so that they can input their media and then there's an approval process that Danae controls. And so it's an easy way to build itineraries and that helps the consumer in planning a trip and shows them many more things that you have to offer. We also believe that we want to increase the amount of content relative to families. And we're seeing that there's good visitation from that. Continue to build the database and drive the qualified traffic to the website. And then we want to, again, highlight those best performing drivers, beef that content up in terms of our outreach so that people will, more people will be interested than what we had originally planned. And then finally, number five is there's technology out now that enables us and we have implemented this for other clients over the course of the last 18 months. We have a resource that has first-party data on 80% of the US population and deep data on that. So what we're able to do is to identify, for example, a specific profile, those that like outdoor water activities. We can identify and go to other destinations and look at what your share of visitor is against the percentage of the population in a particular geographic area makeup of those folks that like outside water activities. And then what we can do is reach them without any waste because it goes directly to only those that are interested in that. So that's something that as you, as we begin to have, see the visitation come back and see their revenues grow and we have enough budget, that's when we'll want to take a look at that because they also report not only on the conversion, but they also report on specific spending categories. They break that down, which we can't do yet with the conversion study. And then one final one that has come up in the last month is I don't know how the recovery dollars are being shared with the different governments in the state of Washington. I do know that throughout the country and the other destinations that we're working with, Florida, we have several there, we have several in Virginia and down in Texas. And those folks are sharing some money with, for travel and tourism because they see it coming back. The research that's happening and there's a new term, I don't know if you've heard of this yet, but the term that has just come out in the last month is called revenge travel. And what revenge travel is about is my home in the last year has been not only my home, it's been the entertainment center, it's been the school for children. It's been the workspace, it's been the healthcare facility. And so what used to be my haven is now a place that I need to get away from. And so pinup demand is really growing and we watch this every week. We have a monitor that we're looking at in terms of consumers that are now planning travel. And now 85% of the US population is reporting travel plans to travel this summer and into the fall. And so now with vaccinations and, you know, with folks that have had COVID and covered, so people are beginning to be more receptive to traveling. So that's going to create a lot of demand here in the summer and in the fall. Next. That's it. Thank you very much. I hope I didn't take much of your time because I know it's a long agenda and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Did you say revenge travel?
Yes, ma'am, I did. It's like, I'll tell you, I'm leaving home and I'm going to go have a vacation. I'm taking a break.
And I'm not getting back for a long time.
Right, right, right.
Well, my family's planning one of those too, but not very far out to the coast. One thing is I just want to tell you and folks at Street Sense that I appreciate how you've worked with Danae and the city. It's been really, really appreciated. You've brought good things here to Bothel. You mentioned the core drivers of things like outdoor activities and heritage and wineries as being that we exceeded expectations.
Yes.
I guess my question is, do we have data on how we did that? Because I'm sitting here thinking, I don't want to screw this up. So do we have data on why that, why we exceeded expectations? Or did people just say, yeah, you guys exceeded?
It's self-reported in the survey question. And so they just identified that they were very pleased with it. They didn't say why because it's a multiple choice answer.
Okay.
And so, so I'm sorry that we don't have that information, but we could probe that in a follow-on survey if we wanted to do that. Maybe do something to the database for those that did report that and learn a little bit more about it.
Right. I guess, you know, one of my favorite questions to ask people and you guys, I'm not telling, I am and it's not my intention to tell you how to do your business, but one of my favorite questions to ask somebody when they've gone and done something is, what surprised you that you weren't expecting? To just get the highlight of the trip.
Well, I think that, I think that what you can find, what you can find out of that, if you look at that chart and that data, look at those that where they said that it was, those that were, that sounded important, a low percentage of those. When you look further down and then you see such a great surprise that you over-delivered. So it wasn't as important as a core driver to that prospective visitor, but yet when they went and they experienced it, it was a real positive experience. So I think if you could look at that list and probably draw some information from that.
Okay. So like you can find serendipity here in Bothel is what you're saying?
Yeah. Absolutely. And we found, we found so many, so many things that they, those that did travel and reported it, it was a surprise. So we intend to use that as we develop more content and more messaging to be able to maybe, you know, what you have here is you have a wonderful gym and you have a vibrant destination. I was telling Danae that as I was watching, I've been here for the whole session and as I was watching what you were doing, a wonderful work that you're doing as a council. I go to a lot of these across the country and you're doing things for the greater good and you're doing things to promote vibrancy in the destination. So kudos to you and the whole council.
Well, thank you. And I think you also raised an important point in my head is that if you don't, if you don't want to set such high expectations that you disappoint people in the process.
Right.
I'm sure that's a danger.
Right. There's another place like that. There's another place, the only other place that I know that has delivered on the expectation, over-delivered like you have, the only other destination that I know is West Virginia. West Virginia has, draws a lot of traffic from Washington DC and major market areas on the East Coast. And they all have this, it's got this perception of hillbillies and, you know, and rednecks and all of this stuff. But when they go there, it's such a beautiful state that they're all surprised. It's got wonderful whitewater rafting and climbing and mountain experiences and the Greenbrier Resort. And so they're all surprised when they come back because they weren't expecting that kind of experience. So that's another example of low expectation and high return.
You may be, you may be setting people who want to leave this area because I think one of our recent new hires in our community development has spent some time in West Virginia and he had rave reviews for West Virginia. So maybe we can do a reciprocal sharing with them.
Or maybe do that in different seasons and you can have an exchange program.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I want to give the floor to other council members. I just wanted to say that I liked your family building concept that you were talking about. And then just thank you so much for your flexibility with the contract here during COVID.
We're really happy to do that. One of our pillars that we stand by is great stewardship. And we want to make sure that we have a long-lasting relationship. And so for all of our clients, we have done whatever we could do to help them. Some we've created programs for takeout trails and provided that. And that was great for Fairfax County, Virginia, when people would come by and it really helped the restaurant industry. But in your case, you needed to have some relief there. So that was the idea that we came up with to help that out. We want to be around for a long time with you.
Well, again, it's very much appreciated and thank you.
Yes, happy to do it.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. And thank you. That was a really good presentation. I have just a couple of questions. And first of all, you said that you were, this data came from 2019 to 2020. So is that, what months are we talking or is it just the total year?
It was, it was around April of 2019. That's when we really launched. And then it ran through, I think, late 2020, November of 2020.
Okay. So we've, basically this data kind of misses the COVID.
Well, it picks up, you know, 2020 after, in February.
Yeah.
So from February 2020 to November, we were still experiencing a decline because of COVID.
And I'm sure that was quite a decline in our hotel industry.
It was, it was indeed.
Yep. So to have the numbers that you have here are impressive. My second question is, when you said 87% describe Bothel positively to others, do you know what they are describing? Do you have any input to that?
No, I just know that they speak positively about their experience in Bothel.
Nice.
I don't have, I don't have the exact data. We would have to add another question for the why and the what.
Right, right. Well, I think what's important for us is whatever we're doing right, we want to continue to do and build upon that, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's right.
And I do appreciate the fact that, I think Bothel is a special place. It's kind of a diamond in the rough because you can come here and then go many places beyond and still come home. And it feels like-
It most certainly is. And I will tell you that not every place has crows. The crows, the crows. It's a wonderful story. It adds to the, it adds to the whimsy of Bothel.
I guess for us that live here, we go, crows? But no, other people go, wow, crows.
I can't tell you how many people we've shared that story with and they're going, wow, unbelievable. And we've got some footage of it and so it's really cool.
Great, good. Thank you so much for your presentation and for your fiscal responsibility as far as extending this over two years. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Happy to do it.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Ralph. And again, thanks for being flexible with the contract. I want to echo my fellow council members' appreciation with that. I have a couple of questions on just kind of the, how you get some of the economic impact numbers that you do.
Sure.
Because from my end, it looks like, hey, we said we would do this and there's a formula from a dude and we did this. Because from my end, it looks like, hey, we said we would do this and there's a formula from a dude and we did this. And I don't really follow how we got that. Could you just sort of talk about that a little bit?
Right. So the visitor spending number comes from the survey. Survey is of the two day, the two different sources. And we asked the question, how much did you spend in your trip? And it's a self-reported number. So we start with that, the visitor party. And then what we've done is we've gotten insight from Texas A&amp;M Department to say, what does that mean in economic impact? So we take into consider that the visitor spending is direct. Then we add an indirect factor and then we have an induced factor. And that works out to be about one, if you take, take the visitor spending and use a factor of 1.45, that will get you to total economic impact.
Okay. So all of this, and there were two, it was, I think, the newsletter and the website visitors. And like, we took a twenty percent of that and extrapolated it out?
Yeah, we took the respondents and then, and then it's, it is projectable extrapolated out to the total database.
So basically, all of these numbers come from twenty percent of the people that we engage with through either the website or the newsletter responding to surveys.
Not twenty percent of them. I can't remember what the number is, but it is enough respondents that Texas A&amp;M reports what the, what the reliability is. And it is a six point, a plus or minus six point five percent error factor at a ninety-five percent confidence level.
Okay. So, okay. So I'm, and again, just so I can kind of understand this. So when somebody engages with the website, like, how do we get a survey to them, to those fifty thousand people?
Right. Good, good question. So what we have is a banners that run on the website that ask them to, first of all, there's two stages of that. They first of all, take the survey on the website about their current experience. So data is reported out on the, on the website visitors' experience and positives and negatives so that we can learn about that. During that, that immediate response, then they have the opportunity to opt in to a conversion study. And so they are incented to opt into the conversion study. And then we follow up when we're going to do the conversion study, which is about nine to 12 months later. And then get their input from that.
Okay. And we have their contact info because they filled it out in the first form and that's the email list that we have? Okay.
Yes.
Do we know like how many overall like respondents we got that data on, that economic impact number? Where the direct spend, I mean, I guess it's the same number.
I don't know, but I can get that for you from Texas A&amp;M. All I know is that what the, what the reliability of the data is and the error factor and the confidence level.
Okay, cool. But you don't have that information? Texas A&amp;M knows how many people?
Texas A&amp;M, I'll get it. Yeah, I can get that from them.
Okay. Cool. And also you mentioned we have twenty thousand email addresses in a database that we have, I guess, harvested or gotten out of this program?
Yeah, it's twenty, it's, it's a little over twenty thousand now.
Twenty thousand-ish.
Yeah.
The, I mean, are we emailing those folks or are you emailing this as part of the contract? Like, how does that work in terms of content and distribution?
Right. We're, we're emailing those and we create the emails and manage that whole program. And it's, it's on your, you own, you own those and it's on your own deployment system and the database is separate. And if we ever parted ways, you own it. So nobody else has access to that.
Cool, perfect.
And they opted, and they, and they opted in specifically, specifically to get information about great getaways to Bothell, Washington. So it wasn't like some overall program that, you know, that was outside of this. It's, it's, it's a process that we've been doing for eighteen years now.
Okay.
And we take them through a comprehensive process and cleansing. So it's quality level data.
Cool. For people to come, come visit the West Virginia of the West Coast. Thank you. Thank you for coming to present to us.
Yes, indeed. Happy to help.
All right. Thank you both for the presentation. Appreciate the information provided to us and very encouraging. Especially once we get, once we get out of COVID and get all the tourists coming back.
Yes, absolutely. Happy to do it.
Thank you all very much. Good night.
All right. We will now move on to AB twenty-one dash zero six one. So consideration of the disposition of the Civic Center Lot. And I believe we will be going to our Economic Development Manager, Jeanie Ash.
Good evening, Council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Jeanie Ash and I'm the Economic Development Manager for the City of Bothell. And I am here this evening to ask, ask City Council to consider if the city should accept an unsolicited offer to purchase a portion of the City of Bothell Lot Eight, which is the Civic Center Lot from Bothell United Methodist Church in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash. So just as a refresher, as you recall, in 2016, the city sold the Civic Center Lot to a hotel developer. And in 2018, the council exercised its right to repurchase a lot because construction timelines were not being met. The buyback of the Civic Center Lot has, was completed in January 2019. So that lot that you bought back included, it was about an acre, including the corner, the contaminated corner, and now a driveway that bisects the property. In the past several years, staff has focused its energies on the cleanup and sale of city-owned properties that are commercially viable and will complete the vision of the downtown, downtown subarea plan. And that is lots D, P South and EF and G. Since the buyback of the Civic Center Lot, work to sell that property has not begun in part due to the desire to have council conversation about the vision for developing a prime piece of real estate co-located with City Hall. In the past two years, I have fielded, fielded many calls from developers interested in buying that parcel. I've fielded calls from developers who wanted to do mixed-use residential, a office building, a medical, a sports medicine complex, and as well as my conversations with the United, Bothell United Methodist Church. Each time I've had these conversations, I have directed their attention to our other surplus properties because the Civic Center Lot was being saved for a development that would benefit the entire community. This past month, the Intram City Manager received an expression of interest a letter from the Bothell United Methodist Church. In that letter, the city outlines the church's goals to purchase property downtown for the purpose of building a mixed project. That project would include affordable housing and much-needed services, although the services have, have not been defined. The letter includes an all-cash offer of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And in related conversations, a representative of the church indicated a need for an agreement so that the City Hall parking garage would satisfy the major code-required parking for the proposed project. The church has not selected a developer to build the proposed project, nor do they have the defined type of services they intend to provide. Without a fully developed proposal, we really have no rationale to accept this offer. Although, with that said, the construction of the City Hall driveway into the parking garage and the corner lot cleanup has created an opportunity for a boundary line adjustment, thereby creating two parcels. In anticipation of future development, staff had the portion of the lot facing northeast one hundred and eighty-third street and east of the City Hall driveway appraised. According to the appraisal performed on the parcel in January of this year, the unsolicited offer is well below the market value. So the acceptance of any offer for this Civic Center Lot will require significant planning. In addition to a boundary line adjustment, negotiations regarding the City Hall parking garage and parking are needed as well as a developer's agreement to memorialize the city's vision for the property and the developer's responsibility to achieve that vision. So I'd like to pause here for a moment and ask if Intram City Manager Lenhart has anything she would like to add to, to my comments, my presentation?
Uh, no, Jeanie, I think you summed it well. Thank you. Yes.
Okay, great. So I didn't want to miss anything. So with that said, staff is seeking your direction. And the direction that we would like you, that we have offered for your consideration. One, we have three options. One is to accept the offer to sell without a developer's agreement for the proposed price. And that is not a recommended option. Or two, decline the, the church's offer and direct staff to return for a visioning discussion related to the Civic Center Lot after the draft cleanup plan for the ultra-custom cleaner site is finalized. Because we're still working on cleaning and there is some synergies between, I mean, it's one piece of property and there's synergies, whether it's, you know, bisected or not. Or two, that's two A, or two B is direct staff to request the GUMC in the next eight months to prepare a more specific proposal in partnership with an experienced affordable housing developer. If no proposal is received in that time period, then staff could proceed with a visioning plan after we, could proceed with a visioning plan. And I'm assuming if that would be after with the, during the cleanup or after the cleanup, Aaron?
Ideally, if we want to recognize the synergy between the two areas, it would be once we understand what the cleanup is going to be and how long it's going to take. So.
All right. And then so that would, and then also too, during that time interim period, we can continue focusing our energy on the cleanup of, and the sale of our other surplus properties, including P South, EF and G, and of course, D. And with that said, the city attorney has something to say.
Yeah, apparently. Yeah. So the way that we contemplated this is that before the, before we can get direction from staff, we do need to have an executive session in order to discuss the minimum purchase price at which you would be comfortable selling the property. Based on a recent case law, my suggestion is that we take a brief recess from this meeting, go into our executive session, have that very limited discussion about the purchase price only, and then return to this meeting in order to discuss the item further if council so chooses. But just for everyone that's watching, the, the, the purpose of the executive session is consistent with case law, very limited to the purchase price only. We will not be discussing other factors.
All right. So how long do you anticipate this executive session? Fifteen minutes?
I believe it was, let me double check on. I think we anticipated fifteen minutes, yes.
All right. So so we will move to executive session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dash one one zero.
One C.
One C. Yes, for fifteen minutes to discuss the minimum purchase price of the property.
I believe I've provided that link on Teams for everyone.
All right. We'll see everyone shortly. We'll see everyone shortly.
Mayor Olson has announced that we are going to extend the executive session for another 10 minutes till 9:32. Thank you.
All right, we are back to continue discussion about AB 21-061, the disposition of the Civic Center lot. Jeannie Ash, if you could remind us of the three kind of paths that you spoke of earlier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the paths that we spoke of, one was to offer, to accept the offer to sell without a developer's agreement for the proposed price. And that is not staff's recommended path. The second path has two parts. The first part is to decline the offer and direct staff to return for a visioning discussion related to the Civic 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 Center lots after the draft action, draft cleanup action plan for the ultra custom cleaner site is finalized. Or part B of that is decline the offer and direct staff to request the Bothell United Methodist Church in the next eight months to prepare a more specific proposal in partnership with an experienced affordable housing developer. If no proposal is received in that time period, then staff could proceed with option 2A, while in the interim, being able to focus more energy on lots D, P South, and EF and G.
All right. Thank you for reminding us of those three options. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yeah, if we were to direct staff to return to a visioning discussion for this, would this come at the cost of some other project that we're working on right now? Or do we have the bandwidth to get that going?
It would probably be challenging. It's not something that was on the radar for before the the draft cleanup action plan was ready. And assuming that the council would want to gather community input in that visioning, it would require some assistance from the assistant to the city manager as well. So to do a full visioning process, I would anticipate will take some time. And I will defer to Jeannie if she has other thoughts.
I don't have anything to add to the to the comment, except that the a visioning process would be probably, I would I would anticipate based on the feedback that we received from council on Lot D, that a visioning process would be preferred.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts. I'm interested in working with the church as they requested tonight. It's kind of a, I'd call it a third way, but when there's two A and B, maybe it's a fourth way. You know, if we decide to go through a visioning process, what we're basically telling them is, no, we don't want what you've proposed here. We want to decide what we want here, and then we will talk about it with you. And, you know, these are members of our community that want to do something good for the community. Like, I think we can trust them enough to work with them, as they've asked. You know, if we, you know, if if we require them to get a developer and a plan, but as they mentioned tonight, the developer requires them to have the land in order to work with for the plan that we require, we're basically just telling them no in a roundabout way. So I would love to see us continue to work with them because I'm very interested in what they have for this property. You know, the idea of a ground floor that is a resource for the community with affordable housing on top hits a lot of our big priorities. And I think when somebody comes to us with a proposal for something like that, it's something we should work with them on. It's something we should listen to them for. So I would very much be in favor of continuing the conversation. And when we know more about exactly what that's going to look like through that process and what the use of the property will eventually be with some more specifics, I think that's a better time to talk about making a decision on whether or not we want to sell it to them. So those are my two cents.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, this is probably one of the best uses I could ever imagine for this property, to have affordable housing, a community center, having people in the church fulfilling the needs of our community. This is really a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. And and I would like to know more. So I'm looking at the recommendations here on, and I'm looking at number two, which is B. So let me ask you this question. If we say direct staff to request that the Bothell United Methodist Church in the next eight months prepare a more specific proposal, does that mean that they, that within those eight months, we will be holding the property for them while they're while they're trying to put together a better, a proposal? What, what, can you define that for me?
So I don't think that there would be any sort of commitment. If someone, and this is kind of what I always like, if someone comes in and says, hey, the property is valued at X, we want to give you $50 million for it. My recommendation is we're going to take the $50 million because that's just what's best. I don't think that this binds our hands. If we were given the direction to have them come back, I don't think it binds us to hold the property for them in during that time period. But that is a reasonable time period that I think that as they requested in the in the public comment that we act in good faith. And and that carries with it, you know, if we can act in what's the best interest of the community by accepting an insane offer that no one would ever dare propose, if that's best for the community, then I think we have that option. But I don't think this binds us to not sell it for those eight months.
So I would, I would support that proposal, which would be B. And the reason for that is, I think one of the things that was said here as well is we need to focus our energy on lots D, P South, and EF and G. So this kind of gives us an opportunity to to really give the church a chance to come up with what we really would love to see there and propose that at their next, after they work with staff. So I'm going to support B.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to thank all the people from the community and the church that came and spoke to us and gave us information on the wonderful opportunity that we have in our community and speaks volumes for the people we have in our community and all the good work they're trying to do. You know, after hearing the the proposals and understanding kind of the history of the property, the magnitude of the cleanup and things like that, it's hard to put a price on a value for the need and the solutions that this property could potentially bring to our community. And as we start talking about this, I start thinking vision, vision, affordable housing, community center. And then I start to think about dividing the property and and splitting it up and and what that bigger vision is. And I I use an example is property D. And decisions that were made and how quickly those decisions were made without thinking through the 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 full process and the full outcome of what that property would be. And we've gone through a visioning process now. And and I think we're going to come to a conclusion and and that property is going to be built out the way the community wants. But this has, to me, a feeling of something extremely significant. This could be the placeholder for the community center, the youth recreation center, social services. I think we heard the chief speak about this earlier. There's a huge opportunity here, and I think it's going to take some planning and some visioning. And and I applaud the the church for putting their vision forward. But I want to hear more about ultimately what their project would entail. I want us to have the opportunity to talk about what the value of this property is, whether it be in pieces or together. But I don't want to discourage them for continuing to to do the work that they're doing. But at the same time, I want us to take a long, hard look at it to ensure that it's going to be the greatest benefit long term to our community, because it might be the last piece we have available specifically in our downtown core to do something like this that's going to benefit our community. So I would like to see if we can find an option that will allow us to continue the conversation with them, not take away from any potential other developers or community members that may be in our community that can help foster the the need that we have there, could put there. And I don't know how, I don't know how that looks. So I guess I would have a question for maybe Council Paul. If we, if we did to be as Councilmember McAuliffe was supporting, does that take other entities off the table from potentially coming to us and presenting an offer?
I mean, I think, I think the short answer is the council can do whatever it wants. And so if the council directs us to continue discussions with the Bothell United Methodist Church without any promise to them, then that does allow other developers who want to come in, who thinks that they can make a viable project on that property to simultaneously make proposals to the city. But the direction that the council gives us tonight can be to continue to discuss with BUMC without making any promises that we are in any way holding the property for them exclusively. And that would be the council's direction. So it really is, the council can shape what they want done here.
So that would give us the opportunity to continue working with them, hopefully collaboratively to where we can can see a vision through. But if others come to the table, they can also help in that vision. We're not pushing them off to the side.
Correct.
And then would that give us opportunity to continue to clean the property up that needs to be cleaned up?
That's, that's continued, that's the plan is to continue to clean up the property. That hasn't changed.
And then would it also give us the ability to maybe see a much bigger vision with more partners on the whole property? Because they want one piece of it, right? Would it help us to?
Correct. Yeah, they, my understanding is that they only want one segment of Lot 8. And so that would, it would give us the time, assuming their staff capacity, to further vision how the entirety of the property or the segments of the property could be used.
Okay. Well, I, so I would be for that, continue that conversation, allowing us to to continue to have conversations, not only with with the church, but with other potential community members, to see the vision through, give the city time to do the visioning process to ensure that the the final outcome is what we want it to be. And it has the highest positive impact on our community because we own the property and we have the ability to 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 create the highest positive impact on our community at this time. Once we don't own it anymore, we can no longer do that. So that would be my my opinion.
Councilmember Agnew? On mute.
You're still on mute.
Well, didn't somebody say that it's a number one Zoom bad thing to do? It's been interesting, the discussion tonight. The the word revision has come up a number of different times. And and I'd like to see staff return for visioning discussion related to the Civic Center lots. And after the draft cleanup action or the ultra cleanup is finalized, you know, whether we I, I think what they're offering us is is worth listening to. And if it can come about, I'd love that. But I think we need to take a look at it again and and just figure out what we want in that lot. There, it's a prime real estate. We really want to get something special in there. So my vote would be for 2A.
All right.
I think the deputy mayor is waving.
Oh, yep. Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Chance to weigh in. Can I weigh in?
Yep.
Okay. Well, one, I took, I took notes. I take notes when we have speakers and for, and I take notes in church. And for a minute there, I thought I was in church. So I just appreciated, there is a strong heart that beats in that body of people. And they, and they know what I'm talking about. And I, I found myself going, Doug Gunnett, I wish they were at my end of the town putting, putting this in. So I, I would like, I'm sure it goes without saying that council promises to keep this conversation going on some level in in some context until that these needs in Bothell are met. So my inclination is to go with 2B with the caveat of thinking bigger picture, you know, is P South, is there, you know, opportunities that we could couple them up on P South as well? I don't want to close any doors on this. I want to keep this conversation going. I'm sure there are hundreds and hundreds of hours that have gone in in the planning and it and it shows. So my thanks to the community members who both live in Bothell and outside of Bothell for investing in Bothell. And that's 2B is my vote.
Yeah. Interim City Manager?
So I appreciate Deputy Mayor, you're mentioning P South because I, there has been quite a bit of conversation about P South and about affordable housing going there. So I think it's an important thing to remember that the city does have multiple parcels in the downtown. And P South will be also right, well positioned on transit line as well as the the lot on Civic Center. So as a potential option to, in continuing the conversation with the with BUMC is to perhaps see if we can make a connection between whoever ends up developing on P South, whether that's Sound Transit or or another multifamily developer. So as an option, 2C dash four.
Wow. All right. So so I was encouraged by how BUMC has come along since, I think, that original letter that was in the the packet. I think they've continued to work and reach out. And as as they were saying, they've been in discussions a long time, but I I think this has intensified that work that they're doing. It it sounds like, you know, they're being thoughtful and working towards a win-win kind of opportunity here. But I, I agree that this is a very finite resource of real estate within the downtown area. this is a very finite resource of real estate within the downtown area uh as our city needs continue to grow and um I, I think we need to have that visioning process to, you know, determine what is the best for the community to continue providing a high quality of service to all of the residents. Um, and I'd like to see the conversation, the discussions continue with BM, BUMC. Cause I, I do believe they are hitting a lot of our council priorities. I think they're hitting what is needed within the city. So uh it, it could very well be the ultimate solution, but I think we need to do some of our due diligence and involve the community as well and determine what is best uh best use, not just the best dollar price, but I think more important is the best use of, of this finite piece of area that we have. We always talk about it with parks and um play fields. There, there's just, real estate is such a small resource that we have anymore. Uh, so I think we just need to be diligent on how we move forward with this. Um, so I think my uh I'm leaning, or I would say the, the two B option is where I believe we should continue moving forward with uh this proposal. In my views. City Attorney, you reappeared.
I was gonna say, I, I haven't heard a consensus of four. Um, it seems, I don't, I don't want to overstep and so um interim city manager Lenhart, please let me know. And just be like, stop it. Um, but what it sounds like is that it, it sounds like the council is interested in continuing discussions um with the church about their offer. Um, it doesn't seem like we are interested in making any sort of commitments in terms of holding the property exclusively for them. Uh, but that we want to continue to discuss with them what their vision is. Um, to, and then we can bring it back at a later date to see if that then satisfies a majority of council. And it seems like as part of that process that um there is a, at least a minority desire to it look at a visioning process as to what that property could be used for and if uh the BUMC's designs are within that scope. Does that, does that sound like a direction that everyone could go with? I don't want, like I said, I don't want to speak for the council, but that's kind of what I'm hearing.
Councilmember McCullough.
So, so in some respects, Paul, I think you're combining one and um, I'm sorry, two, two A and two B, correct?
A little bit, yes.
Yeah, visioning process, continue the discussion with the church, uh give them time to come back and, and, and really identify kind of some of the issues we talked about tonight. So what, you know, what benefits to the community are they going to bring? Um, you know, what programs? I think there's a lot of great things they can bring back to us. And I know that this means we're very interested and we want to continue the conversation. And maybe at the same time, we need to do some visioning, which might help us make a final decision. So I support combination of A and B now.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you. Um, I, Paul, I appreciated how you said that because it was more of a continuing the conversation. My concern with two B is it's more like us saying, okay, go away, go away and come back in eight months. And what I heard from them tonight is that they would very much like to work with us um on finding something that works for us as part of that process. And I mean, to be honest, a community resource center and affordable housing on top, like, I mean, I don't know what we're going to vision better than that. So I don't, I'm not opposed to the visioning idea. I just don't see as much the need. The one thing I don't want to do um and that worries me a little bit about two B is it's that, you know, we're essentially saying, hey, you have to partnership with an affordable, partner with an affordable housing developer, come to us with a concrete proposal or else we cannot move forward. And I don't want that ultimatum to come from council tonight.
And, and, and in the suggestion that I made, that's not how I envisioned it as well. I mean, I think that they're uh they've expressed their concerns that it's, they're in a bit of a catch 22 and that they can't even afford unless they have um access and control over the property in some respect. Um, and it then, that puts the council in a bit of a conundrum because if we turn over those rights to the property without some sort of protection for the community, um that puts the council in a, in a precarious situation. So
For sure.
That's why I'm trying to kind of move forward with a combination of two A and two B, two genuine discussions.
No, and I like that con, I like that kind of combination. And honestly, it sounds like a lot what they were asking for tonight, just like, can we continue discussions with you? Um, and, and that's really what I think the best course of action would be. Um, I just, again, want to make sure we don't give them ultimatums in that catch 22, um because I, quite frankly, I think they're worth having the discussion with and so is their proposal.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah. And, and Paul, just so I'm clarifying, you're continuing the conversations with them. Um, and them working through their, their visioning process. Um, but there's another visioning process that I think may be getting a little confused is that are we working on visioning also? Or are we just allowing them to work on visioning? We're just parking it and not doing anything?
It's door, my, the suggestion I had was door number one, that we would also if, if staff time allowed it, if we had capacity, that we would also engage in our own visioning to see what that property could be used for. So that if there's something other than the um affordable housing, that would create the higher and best used or the highest and best use, that that would be something that the city would also consider and present to council before ultimately asking for their decision.
Okay. And, and, and I, and I, and I like that idea because I think the interim city manager, Aaron, alluded to um opportunities in other parts of our downtown, which means that to me, the visioning should, shouldn't be just about this, this parcel for affordable housing. It should be an affordable housing across our community. And if there's opportunities to create that same affordable housing on another lot in our downtown area core, and then we can get higher use for community and social services, potentially right next to City Hall. That it kind of seems like we need to go through a visioning process so we find out what's best, right? I mean, that's kind of what I'm hearing here. But I could, I could be wrong, but I'm hearing it. One of the things we want to do is, is, is come up with the, the best use, I guess.
Yes. And, and if council, if the rest of council agrees with that collaborative effort, this is also something I assuming that the directors of uh BUMC are listening to. And they may also be able to incorporate that into their um ultimate desire, like, hey, here's what we want to do. And here's why we think this is also best, the highest and best used for the city. You know, I think that that can be incorporated in the collaborative discussion. Again, if I'm overstepping, please just be like, shut up. So.
No, thank you, Paul. I appreciate you clarifying that. That's.
Um, I, I think staff would appreciate a motion um if we're at that point, so we have just the clear direction. And if you want to say just, we want to do what the city attorney said, my mom will appreciate that. Um, I don't know if the staff will, but so.
Councilmember McNeil. You're on mute.
Am I now? Sorry, Mr. You're good. Uh, I'd make the, the motion that the, if the city uh council could um restate his, his comment so that I can restate the motion.
Uh, yeah. So I'm not the city council. I'm just the city attorney.
Okay. Sorry, city council, city attorney. Sorry.
Uh, yeah. So essentially the, the motion that I would propose is that we kind of combine two A and two B and work collaboratively uh with the Bothell United Methodist Church to see if we can um align their vision with what we think the best vision and use of that property is uh without making any sort of promises to them that we will hold the property for them for eight months, but that we will, as they, as they requested, act in good faith based upon staff uh capacity to engage in this visioning process uh to move forward and bring this back uh for further discussion in front of council.
And I would move that. I'm not going to try to remember that word.
That's why we're recording it.
Councilmember Thompson.
I will uh second that motion because I want to make Mama Byrne happy.
She's gonna, she's not gonna ever stop talking about it.
Well, uh, I would say Ann McFarland was not very happy with us right now for just saying, I'll move what he says, but, but Paul said a whole lot there. So uh, so I will go with uh Councilmember McNeil made a motion on the city attorney's recommendation or his verbiage with a second by Councilmember Thompson. And any further discussion on this? Councilmember McNeil, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak to my motion. Ann would be proud of us now because we got that piece right. Um, I, I just want to say that um I'm super energized and, and so happy and proud of our community for community members stepping forward. Um, the amazing work that the, the church um does and the faith, faith-based groups in our community um speak volumes to who we are as Bothellites. And I just want to say that I am looking forward to continuing the conversation and especially after hearing from the chief and Brooke on the radar navigator program and the need for social services in the north end here. Um, I think this, along with some of their visioning, will give Bothell a huge opportunity to do something extremely impactful in a positive way for our community. So um, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Passes six zero with Councilmember Door absent and excused.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jeannie. Appreciate you assisting with this discussion here. All right. Uh, let's see. So we are on to our, our next item, AB twenty-one dash zero six two. Uh, the direction regarding use of public street and rides away on Main Street. And I believe this is over to our interim city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so council, um, I am requesting direction from you this evening on two issues associated with uh Main Street, uh particularly the one block between one hundred and first and one hundred and second. Um, as well as um the continued uh waiver of, of fees associated with that current use. So I'm going to go ahead and share a presentation with you. So just a, a little refresher on the, the temporary closure. So we'll, we'll tackle that one first. Um, in uh June of twenty twenty, um as a result of the governor's, I think it was stay safe, stay home order, um the council directed staff to close the block of Main Street between one hundred and first and one hundred and second to allow businesses to expand their um, their service area um into the right of way. Um, so because, particularly because the restaurants and um exercise facilities, that sort of thing uh were extremely limited as far as the capacity that they could utilize within their businesses. Um, in October, um, at, at that point in time in June, we, we closed that and council's direction was to close it um until October, um thinking that the pandemic may be over by then. Um, and then in October, uh council directed staff to extend it to until the governor said that it was okay for restaurants to serve at their full capacity. Which is great. Uh, we just have, there's so much uncertainty uh with that direction. And in order to provide our businesses with a little more certainty, uh staff's asking for um a little more specificity. So right now, um as I'm sure you're all well aware, uh we are in the governor's roadmap to recovery. We're in phase three. Um, and in phase three, um that has these certain restrictions and basically it's fifty percent capacity for a lot of indoor activities. Um, and phase three is, um, I have notes, uh it's less than two hundred new COVID cases per one hundred thousand residents for fourteen days. Uh, currently King County, since this area, we um, we reference King County for our medical. Uh, we're at one hundred ninety-nine point seven out of one hundred thousand for the last fourteen days. So we're very close to that. Uh, the governor recently said that it used to be if you were over the number on either of these two measures that you would be put back in phase two. Uh, but now it's combined. So um as long as you're okay with one of them. So we're currently bumping up against that one. Um, but the other element is there's, there needs to be less than five new COVID cases. Um, hospitalizations um per one hundred thousand residents in the last seven days. And in that arena, King County is three point eight. So we're, we're well within the, the numbers there to stay in phase three. That said, um, the, the numbers have been going up. Um, so we're, we're not out of the woods. So um, we don't know if we will be in phase three for an extended period. We don't know if um we'll get bumped back to phase two. There's just a lot of uncertainty. But there is hope. There is hope. I just heard from the King County Department of Health earlier this week that um the King County vaccination rates are, are fairly high. So um the fifty-five point four percent of King County residents have received at least one dose of the vaccine at this point in time. Um, and this is as of yesterday. So very current information. Um, and thirty-four point six percent of adults over sixteen are fully vaccinated. So we're, we're heading in the right direction. Um, so staff is recommending to extend the temporary closure uh to October third. And some of the, some of the rationale behind this recommendation uh for one is the vaccination projections, um how we are having good uptake there. Um, also um to, to just limit it to until essentially school is back in session. Um, as you heard from Dr. Murray recently and um, and you've probably heard about North Shore School District and UW Bothell Campus, um they're talking more about in-person instruction, whether that's full-time in-person instruction, um but at least partial, starting in the fall. Um, and also our Fire Station forty-two replacement project. So uh Fire Station forty-two is on one eighty-fifth. Um, and so we will have some rolling closures associated with that construction project. So that will impact the traffic flow on one eighty-fifth, which is the uh parallel corridor to Main Street. So that's for the temporary closure. So another thing that uh staff would like council to provide direction on this evening is a request that we received for um a permanent closure of this one block of Main Street. Um, and I, I provided this map in the council packet and it's a little bit easier to see probably there than it is on the screen now. Um, but this is just the, the road network, the street network in uh downtown. So Main Street is a, is a, what we call a minor arterial. Um, so it connects through, through downtown and then extends Beardsley to the campus and to uh four oh five. So Main Street is um has probably typically in a typical situation, probably carries more traffic than or as much traffic as one eighty-fifth does. Um, one eighty-fifth is that green line and that is going to be, or that is the city's transit corridor. Um, and as we've been discussing the bus rapid transit line with Sound Transit, um, that's the route that those buses will take. Um, one eighty-fifth is also the emergency response corridor for both our fire personnel. One eighty-fifth is also the emergency response corridor for both our fire personnel on in forty-two, as well as the police department. Their driveway exits on to one eighty-fifth. So just to show sort of the limited, limited east-west corridors we have in downtown, I wanted to show this map. So the request came, and I think the request has been coming several, for decades perhaps, to close this one block of Main Street permanently. And staff has concerns. And I think the greatest of the concerns are about traffic, both general purpose traffic as well as transit and bicycles. If they only have the one corridor of one eighty-fifth or five twenty-two, which isn't conducive to bicycle use in particular, that that will be problematic because then one eighty-fifth will be overburdened with traffic. And there's also concern from our emergency responders, both from the fire department as far as responding to those buildings on either side of Main Street in that block. There's no break between the buildings, so it's challenging for them to access from either the north side or the south side only. Also, as I mentioned, one eighty-fifth is the emergency route for both fire and police. And there's concern about congestion on one eighty-fifth as a result of that closure of Main Street. Some other concerns from staff, we invested in Main Street, that block, or two blocks, from Bothell Way to one hundred and second. It was about five million dollar project to improve that street. And a lot of that funding came from other agencies and it was arterial street funding. So whether it was TIB or the federal highways, it was primarily gas tax money. So there's concern about if we would, you know, we would have to check in with those agencies to determine what, if anything, we might have to reimburse to them if we were no longer using it as an arterial. And then just general maintenance concerns, day-to-day maintenance of, you know, whether it's the garbage or street cleaning and that sort of thing. So staff's recommendation related to the permanent closure is that the road remain open for use. However, we would like to come back to the council during the next Capitol Facilities Plan and budget process to talk about some town square improvements that the city could make, some investments that we could make, whether it was in City Hall to make the plazas a little more conducive to special events and sort of that the town square use that the proposer was mentioning for Main Street. We could also discuss the possibility of installing hydraulic or movable bollards on Main Street and do periodic closures, whether that's closing that block for the summer or closing that block on weekends for the summer, that sort of thing. Another option would be to install hydraulic bollards or movable bollards on one hundred and first between the City Hall building and the police building. So to kind of expand the plazas that already exist at City Hall into the streets so that we could capture more area for special events and festivals and that type of thing. And one of the ideas that was posed during, in the proposal from the downtown business was to have that closure for more city events and festivals and that sort of thing. So part of the budget conversation would also be about funding for Parks and Recreation Department to be able to support additional festival-type activities if that was council's interest. So that is, that is all for me. And I welcome your questions and your comments and direction. You're muted.
Councilmember Agnew?
I think staff's recommendations are very valid. I think we should adhere to them.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I had a question. There are, we talked about a traffic study and all of the concerns that we have are generally hypothetical and we haven't seen those problems come to pass yet. But obviously, once schools in session, we're expecting more traffic to go along there. Is that fair to say?
Yes, once schools are back in session and also people start returning to work, even in some level, even if it's not the same as pre-COVID. Yeah, people start using the park and ride again and people, that sort of thing.
I think rush hour traffic's back to like ninety-five percent or something like that, like car traffic's mostly back. The question that I have is, it seems that we're extrapolating a lot of hypothetical problems that we aren't sure if they'll come or not, which are completely legitimate concerns to have. And I get that, they make sense. But instead of spending a lot of money and making decisions on hypotheticals, what would happen if we just left Main Street the way it is for a month after school started? Then we could see, then we could actually know, like it wouldn't cost us anything. And certainly if it started causing Armageddon and there was this huge problem that we had, like we could act quickly to make it go away. But it would be free and we would get actual information to use rather than have to kind of wonder what might happen. Do you see any issues with that?
I mean, for the traffic perspective, I mean, I think that as long as we keep it closed this way, I think I think we're causing wear and tear on roads that aren't built for it, for one. But I do think that there is some information to be had from there. I do think that we would not receive the information that we need about what the impacts of having the transit running on one eighty-fifth and that data. And, you know, and we've mentioned that we recommend a traffic study if council does want to explore permanent closure. It's, it would be, it's hard for me to recommend spending a hundred thousand dollars on a traffic study rather than spending it on infrastructure, honestly.
I'd rather spend it on bollards.
Exactly, exactly. But, you know, I do think that just experience that staff and the community and like our police department have had, have experienced when traffic is flowing at its typical rate, that one eighty-fifth gets congested even when Main Street is there. So the concern that it would be even more so is certainly.
I mean, is real, but we could just leave it like it is. It wouldn't cost us anything. And then we could see if there is a problem. And if we are talking about putting this decision off for a couple of years, we could act quickly to take it back if it turned out to be a really big problem. Like, we don't necessarily have to stop doing it for a couple of years, but if we're going to not do it for a couple of years and take a look at it in twenty twenty-three, why wouldn't we leave it up until there's a problem? I mean, if we're assuming one road will get worn a little faster, then I would also assume that Main Street would get worn less quickly. So like the long-term maintenance costs would just get shifted, not necessarily raised. Like, if there were problems, we could just stop at any point in time. We could make the decision, we don't want to do this anymore. But that, to me, that seems like a better option than to stop doing something that has been incredibly popular in the community. I mean, there was a poll on the Bothell Community Facebook page where I think eighty-six, eighty-seven percent of people said that they loved it and we should keep it this way. We obviously haven't done any official outreach, but the feedback from the community we've gotten has been mostly positive. And the feedback from the chamber has also been mostly positive with some, you know, questions and things that we could, I think, work through. So I just don't understand why we would stop doing it when we have the option of stopping at any point in time if those problems do exist. And I guess that's not a question. That's just how I feel.
Councilmember McCullough?
This is a very difficult issue because I think that there are options that other cities have done where they've closed the parking off and allowed some flow of traffic, whether it's one-way or a smaller flow. I really think people want a gathering place and I appreciate the fact that we would maintain Main Street as kind of that, you know, gathering place for the people and still have a, I mean, I really don't want the buses back there. That's the only thing I really don't want back there. When you're sitting down and eating lunch and a big bus steams by, that is not my idea of a nice little Main Street corridor. So that is one issue I do have, I feel strongly about. I don't think making other streets kind of your gathering place, such as where City Hall is or festival street. I think the question really is, what are we going to do about the closure of Main Street? That's the really big question. And I really like staff's recommendation that we go till October third and that we come back with some other options of what we might do there, whether it's closing the parking or bollards there. And I would not really want to wait till twenty twenty-three for that discussion. I think it should take place prior to our opening, prior to our decision to open Main Street. So that's kind of where I go. And I'll let you all discuss the rest.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, you made a comment about five million dollars or something, I think. Can you explain that a little bit more, what that five million dollars represents?
Certainly. So the city reconstructed two blocks of Main Street a few years ago. I believe we started in twenty sixteen. It was after the Main Street fire. And we received money from TIB and from federal highways to do that project. So I think that project was in the order of five or six million dollars. And the city contributed between all of our different funds, about one and a half. And the rest of it was grant funding, essentially. So we have had, we posed the question to a staff member at TIB and they said that they didn't think that the city would have to reimburse them for that. However, we haven't reached out to WashDOT to determine if we would have to reimburse the million dollars of surface transportation program funding that we received for that project.
And again, so the funding, the reason why we were successful in that grant was, what was the reason why we were successful in that grant?
Because it's an arterial, it was a minor arterial street. So the TIB funding was arterial funding that was funded through gas tax. And the state, the federal funding is federal highways funding. So it's, it was to rebuild the street for transportation purposes.
And so if I'm understanding correctly, it's transportation for buses or trans?
For general transportation, general transportation.
Okay, so they, WashDOT, it sounds like, invested in that. And if I'm, if a memory serves me, I think the governor actually came here. It was very instrumental in us getting funding for Main Street. And it was because of the transportation needs on that street. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so there's the potential, not saying that would happen, but the potential we could have to pay back some of the funding because we're electing to change the use. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for explaining that. So the bollard concept in Main Street remind me of Kirkland. Kirkland has a Main Street that has bollards. And if I'm not mistaken, those bollards are removable. Is that correct?
The Park Lane, I believe, has similar curbless design. And they actually came after Bothell did. They got the idea from us, so.
I love it. I love it. So if memory serves, they put the bollards up every now and then and they have art festivals and things like that. Is that correct?
I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if they have them at either end of Park Lane or if they similarly have them to essentially protect folks from the curb.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm thinking of something different. So right, I think there's a Starbucks in downtown Kirkland. There's a road that goes through, there's businesses on both sides. One way. And occasionally, they put bollards up on each end and they have arts and crafts and things like that in there. So you can't actually drive through there. It's kind of closed off. So is that similar to what you're thinking the bollards would be on each end and then it would be closed off? It could be used for arts and crafts, things like that as a Main Street?
Yes.
Okay, I kind of, I kind of like that, that concept and idea. It also makes me think of Bothell Landing. And where are we going with Bothell Landing and the music and, you know, potentially music and getting music back down into Bothell Landing and festivals around City Hall? So I guess I'm torn. I'm actually leaning towards the staff's recommendations on this one because I think we have some other opportunities across our city. So I'm actually gonna, I'm actually leaning towards the staff's recommendation on this one.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
You read my mind. Thank you. Well, first off, transit I worry less about because they figured out rerouting themselves just fine and still getting people to their places, both with reworking Main Street and with Main Street being shut down. I do have a question. How expensive would it be for us to run an advisory vote on this ballot, this upcoming ballot? What would be, what would be, what would be a ballpark figure on that?
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, I have no idea.
Here's my theory on it. Somebody knows, who knows?
And, and just, oh, sorry, Paul, did you know?
I have no idea.
Well, say in theory, we could do an advisory vote. If it came back from the public of yes, shut it down, because that's been our problem of we're getting enthusiastic replies to shut it down, but is it an inaccurate sampling of what the people of Bothell want to do, right? I mean, that's one of our issues. So, so, so if in theory we could do an advisory vote, I was thinking if, if it came back very strongly to close it down, council gets a good idea of what the people really, that they really want. If it comes back, hmm, yeah, we can't, we're tilting, the public's tilting towards closing it down, but it's not a real strong yes. Then that tells me, well, then maybe we do partial shutdowns for events and things. And then, but if they say, but if it comes back very strongly, no, then that tells us we just leave it as is. That advisory vote would help me know what, what the people of Bothell would like. So, so there's that idea. Do we want to put it out as an advisory vote just to see what the people want to do? Because as you said, it's been in discussion for a very, very long time. If that's off the table and, and we, for whatever reasons, we don't want to do that, then keep it shut down through October third. I did like Councilmember Thompson's idea of add some extra time to get an idea of what's playing out. But that would only answer some of our questions, but it would answer, it would be better to have some of our questions answered instead of none of our questions answered. But my only request is that, I have to say, tell you, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four with the, you know, Capitol Facilities Plans, twenty-three to twenty-nine, sounds like forever down the road. with the, you know, capital facilities plans, 23 to 29, sounds like forever down the road. So if we were to, as a council, to move that way, then I, I, I would like to toss out the idea that if that's what we are doing, then we, then we talk about after the 4th, during this interim time where we figure out what we're going to do in our capital facilities plan, after the 4th, we shut it down in the summer. We just shut Main Street down for the summer, and we open it up for all kinds of events and activities and enjoying summer. That way, we still enjoy that community aspect of Main Street when the weather's great, and then we reclaim the street during the, when we have to go back and face reality and get back to a routine supply. So those are my thoughts.
I would, I would recommend that if we, I wouldn't recommend an advisory vote without a traffic study to go, to provide data for council to make a decision. I think there are, there are some things that are, are good popular opinion things, and I think there are others where you need some data associated with, you know, emergency response and traffic, particularly when we do have a higher level of transit service running on 185th, and what the impacts might be, and what projects we may need to mitigate that closure.
Okay, so, so just a clarifying question. In order to do an advisory vote, you think we need to have that information in the advisory vote, vote from a traffic study?
I mean, in my opinion, I think the traffic study would provide more information than an advisory vote would be. To me, I, I understand that there may be some community desire to do this. I think we need to understand what the impacts of a permanent closure would be.
Oh, okay. So now tell me what's faulty with this, because I trust your, I, I trust your opinion on this. So if the, if advisory comes back, vote come back, I guess I left that piece out. If the advisory vote comes back saying, yes, close it down, to me, that would be a signal, do the traffic study and come up with an options on what that would look like. Is there, and I left that piece out, am I thinking, honestly, it was there. But, but is that something that where the, it could happen after the advisory vote?
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
All right, so the, so the first question on just the extension of Main Street through the 3rd of October, I think that's a good idea, as it was stated, just giving everyone that's affected by it, just some concrete date to plan around, that'll be at least to that point. So they can make those plans. For the, the permanent closure, I have to think that map that you shared with us is very illustrative of the network, the road network that we have in downtown Bothell. There's lots of streets that are dead-ended or just hit walls, don't go through. We really just have those two, east-west, and then 522 as well. I do like the option of having bollards, having some control of it for weekends or even a summer closure. I think there is that benefit, especially when the usage from campus commuting draws down, and I know just from using the park and rides, the summer use of park and rides is, is quite a bit less as well. So I think that diminishes the need for Main Street during the summer as well. So I think we would need some additional information if we were ever to do a closure of Main Street. I think there's too many unknowns, just determining what, what the levels of service for those other roadways would be.
Hey, welcome, Councilmember Dier.
Hello. Can't believe the ledge ended earlier than City Council, just gonna say.
So we, I don't know if you have heard or were listening at all, but we're just discussing Main Street, the Agenda Bill 21-062, the two kind of topics of continuing the closure through October 3 of this year. And then the second topic was the permanent closure of Main Street and directing the city manager on really kind of the options. I'm not going to rehash the multiple options that Erin went into, though. So I don't know if, if you want to give any input on this coming, just into it, pretty cool.
Has everyone else already spoken on the topic?
They have.
Okay. Oh, my gosh, the timing. So I, I was not able to listen because I was on the floor voting, but I'm definitely in favor of extending the closing till October 3. And I'm in favor of making it permanent. I always have been. I think I've been on the record for that for a very long time. So that's where I stand, not knowing what the other options are on the table or where anyone else stands.
Fair enough. All right, Councilmember Agnew, did I see your card earlier?
No, I was just gonna, at, at Councilmember Zorn, I, I think when we went out for the ballot on the North Shore Senior Center, it cost us $80,000, because you have to go with both King County and Snohomish County. So that's just a figure I remember from there. Councilmember McNeil may remember more than I.
So I would say we have these two recommended actions. I think we have some clear direction, if someone would like to make a motion for the first. And you were looking for a motion, weren't you? All right. So everyone has spoken on the first one. So if someone would like to make a motion for our first topic of continuing the closure to October 3? Councilmember Thompson?
I was looking it up here. I move to approve the extension of temporary Main Street closure and suspension of downtown public use, public area use permit fees and use charges through October 3, 2021.
Excellent. Councilmember McNeil?
Suck it.
Excellent. So we have a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve the extension of temporary Main Street closure and suspension of downtown public area use permit fees and use charges through October 3, 2021, with the second by Councilmember McNeil. Any discussion on this item? Council, Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yeah, I would like to make an amendment. Mind making, making this at the proper place? Can I make Ann proud here?
I believe you are.
I would like to amend this, that we approve this extension and have an advisory vote on the upcoming primary election, on whether or not the community at large would like to permanently close Main Street.
Do we have a second? I'm not seeing a second, so I believe that amendment fails or dies. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to amend the motion to, to state, I might have to clarify this first, to state that prior to making the decision to, to temporarily close till October 3, we would receive some options from the city about what other opportunities we might have to, let's see, other options for town square improvements. So I'd like to make, I'd like to take one and two and kind of combine them, but I'd like to make sure that prior to October 3, we have recommendations about town square improvements. That's my motion.
Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to, I guess, could you repeat your amendment, Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes, it would be to approve the extension of temporary Main Street closure till October 3, continuing with the suspension of downtown public area use permit fees. And it would also direct the city manager to bring options for town square improvements prior to October 3.
All right, so we have an amending motion to approve the extension of temporary Main Street closure and suspension of downtown public area use permit fees and use charges through October 3, 2021, with the city manager to bring options for the town square improvements to the city council prior to that date. Is that, am I capturing that correctly?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, any discussion on this amendment? Councilmember Thompson?
I agree with the, the point of Councilmember McAuliffe. Like, I, I would also like to do that. I would just like it to be separate in the second motion. And I don't understand why they're together, because basically the amendment is just changing the dates on the second motion that's recommended action that's in our packet. So I will be voting no on the amendment, but I will be voting yes for that same thing, amending the next motion.
Any further, would you like to speak to your amendment, Councilmember McAuliffe?
I think, I think I have a, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So for our city manager, our interim city manager, so when you, when the second said, second, number two, says that we will bring options for town square improvements to city council during the 2023, 24 budget, and 23, 29 capital facilities, what timing would that be? What would be the timing of that? What month?
So that would be next year. It would be next, oh, yeah, next summer, likely.
Right. And I think my motion was, I would like to have those improvements brought to us prior to a decision about whether we will open Main Street or not. So that's why I wanted it prior to October 3.
Councilmember Duer?
Just point of order.
State your point.
A motion's on the floor. We shouldn't be discussing and asking questions of staff.
Point is well taken. I believe we're just in to discussion at this point. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk? Oh, Councilmember Thompson?
Did Councilmember McAuliffe's motion get a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so for the amendment, please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson? Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Did you say?
I changed my mind.
Sorry, I was like, did I not hear you? Changed your mind, okay. Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
No.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass the 6-1 with Mayor Olson dissenting.
And so just to be clear, all we've done is amend the first voting decision. We haven't actually voted on that yet. So now the decision is that we essentially follow staff recommendation A with, and it kind of absorbs second decision, that we bring back town square options prior to the October 3 deadline. So that is before you for discussion.
Any discussion? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorn?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass the 6-1 with Councilmember Duer dissenting.
Wait.
No.
I got-
I believe it's unanimous.
I said yes.
You said yes?
I did.
I'm sorry. 7-0.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, so we have two agenda items left. We have a council conversation, and then we'll have our executive session.
Actually, the executive session, sorry if I remembered.
Oh, it was 6B?
Yep.
Yes. I didn't say that. So yeah, we have a council conversation, and then the executive session.
No, we have executive session, then council conversation.
Oh.
That's not correct. Sorry, I'll pull that back up.
I thought we were making it 6B.
Correct.
Make council conversation 6A?
No, no, no. So the, but I, I believe that my recommendation was that because we had executive sessions as item 6, that we, instead of just having 6A for executive session regarding the minimum purchase price for real estate, we added a 6B to include potential litigation. After we go into that executive session, we will return for council conversation as item 7.
All right.
And so I believe we said, was it 20 minutes or 30? I can't remember, I'm sorry. Obviously, 20 is efficient.
20.
Yeah. So if we could recess from the Zoom meeting, and everyone either logs off or at a minimum shuts off their camera and microphone, we can rejoin the link on Teams for the executive session for potential litigation, and then resume the Zoom meeting at 11:10.
Councilmember McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, can we confirm the link, how it was sent? Because I only had one link from-
It's the same link that I sent earlier. It's for both executive sessions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll see everyone over there.
Welcome back everyone. We'll give another minute before we get into council conversations. Just want to say Anne would be very happy with our performance tonight. We pulled in all sorts of lessons that we covered with her. Point of order, amendment.
And we redeemed ourselves with the, you know, stepping up our game. It was good.
All right. Anyone have a topic for council conversations? Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I just have one item and I want to apologize again for interrupting earlier in council. I had messaged our mayor and city manager about having a moment of silence at the beginning of council. So I'll just toss it out to you. I think we always end on a high upbeat note. But I would like to request that when we're done with our conversation here, that we could just have silence to remember the pain and the need to mend from George Floyd's violent death. That and the judgment that was made today. There's, it represents so much hurt and prejudice that has gone unaccounted for that I think it's appropriate today that at least here at the end of council, we end it with a moment of silence. People pray, meditate, whatever it is that they need to do. But it's a pretty pivotal moment in our history. And if you're game for ending on that sobering note, I would personally appreciate it.
Councilmember Doer?
I appreciate that. I think it's very well said. It's notable that when justice occurs, it's a big deal. It shouldn't be a big deal and yet it is because of what's gone before. And it shouldn't have to feel like such a victory that someone had to die for that to happen, for that people to take note.
Councilmember Thompson?
I just want to echo those thoughts from councilmembers Doer and Zornz as well. It's shocking that it's shocking that something that we all saw happen actually got the verdict that follows what we all saw happen. And my, I'll leave it at that. I also just want to say to the grocery store workers that have been coming here for the last, you know, few weeks, asking us to help them. First off, thank you. You truly are essential. And I stand with you. I wish that that was something we would discuss here in the city of Bothell. And I applaud the cities in the area that have had the courage to discuss that in public. So thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for continuing to come and ask us. And that's all I've got.
Councilmember McNeil?
I wanted to thank the deputy mayor for bringing up the moment of silence and councilmember Doer and Thompson for speaking to it as well. It's been a long road. And for many of us, it's been an extremely long road to see justice served in this manner. There's a lot of people that have gone out into the streets and have activated and done things in a positive manner. And those people don't get the attention that they deserve. It's often the negativity that's shown and tonight, we should all be celebrating our nation and the positivity that this verdict is bringing to the streets. Because you don't see the rioting and other things that were typically happening. And so I'm proud of our country. I'm proud of to be an American today. But I will tell you today's verdict does not solve the problem. The problem continues and we must all work together to continue to fight for justice, not for just black and brown people, but for all people. There's many people that suffer from all different types of bias. And I think it's going to take all of us uniting together to solve the problem. I'll close with no matter what we do or what we say, everything that we do can affect another. And we must all recognize that our words matter. And so when we can come together and we can speak to one another respectfully and with the best intention, that's when we'll be at our best. So I want to, again, I thank you guys for bringing that up, Deputy Mayor Zornz. I think it's important that we do it and hopefully others will join and understand what today actually means. I would be remiss if I didn't bring up all those who suffered such devastating loss prior to George Floyd. But there's been many and there probably will be more after. But today I'm proud to be an American and I'm proud to sit here and serve the community with all of you.
Councilmember Agnew?
I knew I should have put up my card earlier because he's a tough act to follow. I just want to thank Deputy Mayor Zornz for bringing this up. It means a lot to most Americans. I hope that this is going to be the end of systemic racism in our country. I hope and pray that. I'm all for the moment of silence.
Deputy Mayor Zornz, thank you for bringing this up and speaking to this. I appreciate just you bringing this topic up. And I think it just shows that the conversation and the discussions need to continue. That that's the only way this ever gets solved is that we keep discussing it, keep talking about it. Because as, as you know, councilmember Agnew said, you know, it's systemic. So it's a very rooted issue that's going to take a while to correct discourse. So I think this was a step in that direction. So we can only hope it continues, that we don't have any steps backwards. But yeah, councilor, Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I was just, I was just going to say, you know, there's a lot of reasons why prejudice and hatred and assumptions exist. You know, and we are part of the process of setting up boundaries of what's acceptable behavior and what's not. And we talk about ending hate, but hate is a hard issue. And the more as a society, we deal with what's going on in our hearts, it's going to reflect more in our behavior. So, you know, we need to keep on doing what we're doing on setting those boundaries. And I think councilmember McNeil was alluding to it is that not taking offense and reaching out and getting more information. I'm rephrasing you, so I apologize. You said it better than I'm doing it. But that's all part of dealing what's going, what's brewing on, brewing inside a person's heart. Is getting more information and not making those assumptions, taking filters off. That does a lot with starting to get rid of hate.
All right, well, I would say that we observe a moment of silence now for this past year, just this whole country, our community, and hope that we all come out stronger and more connected as a result.
And for George Floyd.
And for George.
And for everyone.
Right. Yes. Dan, thank you for bringing this forward. Amen. Good night.
Thank you all. I appreciate you. Wonderful people to serve with.
Absolutely. Everyone sleep well tonight. You do good work.
Thank you. Have a good night everyone.
Good night.